I'd like to call to order the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission Regular Meeting, October 22, 2019. Roll call this evening, let the record show that Commissioner Bates is absent. Second item on the agenda, approval of the minutes, September 24, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from the September 24, 2019 Regular Business Meeting.
I second.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passed. Item three is public comment. Should anybody in the audience like to make comment for items not otherwise on the agenda for the first 15 minutes of the planning commission meeting, we set this time aside. Do I have anyone that would like to speak to anything other than this evening's agenda? Seeing none, I close that portion of our meeting. Item four is public meetings and hearings, and the first item is a continuation. The planning commission will hold a public hearing continued from September 24 on the preliminary plat PRD and associated permits and documents for a proposed 11-lot subdivision located at 2870 Southwest scenic heights street. The proposed subdivision is located on two existing single-family lots with each of those homes proposed to be demolished. Landscaping and native vegetation in shoreline areas is proposed along with the development. The planning commission may make a recommendation to the city council at the conclusion of this hearing. Steve?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the planning commission knows, this quasi judicial application is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine, and so I'm going to have an opening statement and some questions for you then. For those of you who were in attendance at the last hearing, if there has been no change in your position or response to these questions, you can simply state no change since last time. So, RCW 4236 requires that members of this body determine prior to the staff presentation of a quasi judicial matter whether the appearance of fairness doctrine requires that he recuse himself from sitting on the matter. In light of that requirement, I will ask you some questions before we begin the hearing. I will ask the questions as a group and then call upon each commissioner asking for your response. Question number one, does any member of this commission have knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or opponents of this application? Mr. Philip?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Wassinger?
No.
Mr. Hovey?
Yes, but no change from our last meeting.
And Mr. McFeeters?
No.
Number two, does any member of this commission either have a pecuniary or non pecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding? Mr. Philip?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Wassinger?
No.
Mr. Hovey?
No.
And Mr. McFeeters?
No.
Number three, does any member of this commission know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Mr. Philip?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Wassinger?
No.
Mr. Hovey?
No.
And Mr. McFeeters?
No.
Okay, number four, does any member of this commission live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Mr. Philip?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Wassinger?
No.
Mr. Hovey?
Yes, but no change from last time.
Okay, and Mr. McFeeters?
No.
Does any member of this commission have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding which would or could cause the commission member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding? Mr. Philip?
I did meet with, I made a trip down to the site earlier this month, and I met with Ms. Cohen, Ms. Patty Cohen, to go down and look at the base of the cliff. Ms. Cohen then asked me a question, and I told her I could not answer, I could not discuss anything about this at that time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Philip. Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Wassinger?
No.
Mr. Hovey?
No.
And Mr. McFeeters?
No.
Number six, is there any member of this commission who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceeding? Mr. Philip?
Nope.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Wassinger?
No.
Mr. Hovey?
No.
Mr. McFeeters?
No.
Number seven, has any commission member had any ex parte contacts concerning this matter? And again, for those of you who had some in the last meeting, I think you could say same as last time. Mr. Philip?
Same answers earlier.
Okay, Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Wassinger?
No.
Mr. Hovey?
Same as last time.
Okay, Mr. McFeeters?
No.
Number eight, then, is there any member of the audience who because of the appearance of fairness doctrine wishes to disqualify any member of the commission from hearing this matter? If so, please state the commission member and the reasons why you believe that commissioner member should be disqualified. Going once, going twice, all right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll read this statement for the ongoing public input. This is a public hearing for the Hillside scenic heights application. Members of the audience will be given an opportunity to speak to the matter. A maximum of three minutes per public speaker will be allowed, provided that the commission may, in its discretion, allow for additional time where the complexity of issues involved requires more time in order to give the public speaker a reasonable opportunity to be heard on that matter. No speaker shall be allowed to cede his or her time to another speaker. The monitor above my head tracks the speaker's three minutes of time. Now I'm going to reopen the public hearing. At this time, Ray, remember?
Ray, just a minute. I'm going to say a little more to you, that's a problem, hopefully not too much. What we're going to talk about is kind of the, some of the issues that we discussed in the last meeting. I want to make sure that it's understood that the new staff report is a reflection of the old one, that we're not allowed to use the staff report, there are some changes to the supporting documentation along with that. And we'll pull that over.
Ray, check on the side to see if the switch is on.
You can't hear a thing in here.
Can't be people loud?
No, it's still loud. I will speak directly into the microphone. So, the staff report does not reflect the law of changes, it was kind of introduction to discuss some of the issues that we are going to discuss tonight. So I want to give you an idea of what we're looking at, because there's nothing coming through here. Sorry I interrupted, but you do want to get that to say something. Would you give us test, test, one, two, three?
I'm sure we'll figure it out when we come, thank you so much for your guidance.
That sounds promising.
Can you hear nothing? You got me now?
It's working. It's working.
Nope. I wrote it into your pain, bro.
Is it problem standing? Is he, he's like? We can hear that.
Okay. Here we are. Okay, so I wanted to talk about briefly the hearing materials that you have that were included with your staff report and the materials for this meeting. We have the October 22 packet, which includes the September 24, which is the previous staff report, and all the attachments that went with that. We have an add-on packet that was distributed on the 18th that includes some additional information that was provided to us by the applicant. And then we also have a letter from Cohen Hewlett to the planning commission that was dated yesterday, the 21st. And then based on some of that information, we were able to do a revised conditions of approval, revised findings of fact, and then we also have some renderings that were provided by the applicant today. The information, those last three there are the ones that Sarah passed out to you just a few moments ago, so you can refer to those as we need to, as we go through this presentation. So this is all your basic information from previously, I'm not going to go through it in depth again, parcel number, zoning, et cetera, lot size, all that sort of thing. This is all the same as it was previously. The site is obviously in the same location. So the project timeline, we started out in November of 2018, and then we continued to September 24, and then tonight, October 22, same information as you had last time, just wanted to go over that very quickly. And then the applications that are under review tonight are the preliminary plat PRD, which is Plan Residential Development, Shoreline Substantial Development Permit, Landscape Plan, Land Clearing Plan, and Transportation Concurrent. As you'll note there, the SEPA has been taken care of at this point and does not require action or review on your part. So, I wanted to bring up in some detail here the issues that were brought up at the previous hearing, and those are generally categorized into these eight, or excuse me, seven different categories. Density, the alteration of the development pattern in the area, traffic, bluff erosion, runoff into the bay, number of variances and waivers, and parking. So getting into a little bit of detail there, just to start off with the density, that's kind of the big issue, I think, right now, so we'll just start off with that one. Now, we need to note that this is an R1 zone district property. In our code, in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code, it states that the zone district allows for three to six units per acre. Three is a minimum, six is a maximum. The project is calculated at about 3.4 units per acre, and we do have to consider that entire property for purposes of density calculations. We go back to the map and you can see the law of that property is on the tidelands, and so there was some question about that. It is a requirement because it's part of the legally platted lot, but we could like to point out that even with the tideland area removed from consideration, it still meets the density requirement for the R1 zone district. It still comes in under six units per acre. So, the issue I think that we see here is, subjectively, the project looks very dense because it's kind of compressed into a smaller area. But again, we would like to mention on there and point out that it does still fall within that six unit per acre maximum. It's also of note to point out that if the scenic heights area were developed today, it would actually not be approved because it's below that minimum of three units per acre. So, the way that zoning works nowadays compared to how that area was developed is a little bit different. We require a little bit greater density because we're trying to achieve urban density in some of these areas that may not be used to that, that were developed in the county or developed a long time ago at a different kind of planning regime, if you will. So, going on to the alteration of the development pattern, the proposed development has significantly greater setbacks from the bluffs than a lot of the existing homes along there, and that is also a requirement of modern planning, is we do require that we protect those bluffs and we protect those sensitive areas by including larger buffers to those areas. Staff has reviewed the project and does not find that the proposed project is contrary to the residential bluff conservancy area designation. That's within our shoreline master program. And I wanted to take a little bit of a dive into that. The shoreline master program identifies different areas along the shoreline, and the area that we're talking about here is called residential bluff conservancy. And the purpose of that is to accommodate existing and future residential development on more suitable portions of lots that contain geologically hazardous slopes while preserving the ecological functions of natural bluff areas and shorelines. We feel that this project achieves that by setting back the homes from the bluff, a minimum of 75 feet, which was something that was recommended by the engineers and by the geotech and all of these reports that we got along with this project, that's what we went with, that's what the experts have said, and we believe that the shoreline master program is served by that setback. One of the management policies within the shoreline master program under the residential bluff conservancy is that residential uses are located and designed in a manner that does not accelerate bluff erosion and slope failure, and has a preferred use for an upland portion of the residential bluff conservancy. Within the slope buffer, bluff and beach areas, passive recreation, public access, open space, and voluntary shoreline enhancement are preferred uses. A planned development should be located, sited, and designed and maintained to protect and enhance the shoreline environment. Specifically, development should be sited to avoid the potential for slope erosion and failure over the usable life of the structure. So, we talk about how the, there's this formula for figuring out the bluff retreat, and when we went through that third-party review previously, when you got that information before the previous meeting, there was a lot of discussion about whether or not the methodology works and, you know, what the methodology is for bluff retreat. And so that is one of the things that we have gone over a lot as staff, and I believe that the applicant's engineers have discussed a lot, is that key thing being the lifetime of the usable life of the structure. And so, over X number of years, you expect a certain bluff retreat, and so the explanation of the experts in this case are that this does meet that requirement. So moving on to talk about traffic, our engineering staff reviewed the application and has determined their existing street network can handle the increased traffic. Through modeling and through, you know, years of experience, the traffic engineers have determined that it's going to be approximately 11 cars additional at peak traffic hour, and that's in the evening, that that is not going to create a situation where we have a failure of an intersection, where there's so much traffic that it just doesn't work anymore. Additionally, concerned about additional traffic from the Gary Oaks subdivision, which is over on the highway, cannot or should not be considered for this project. That is a separate issue. We have to focus on what this project will create as far as traffic is concerned. Going to bluff erosion, our engineering staff has reviewed reports, they asked for additional information, and were able to review that additional information and agree with the conclusions of that third-party review, that the setback from the bluff is appropriate for this construction. Groundwater seepage was brought up, that was also addressed in those reports. We talked about runoff into the bay. Again, our engineering staff has reviewed the proposal, water will not be flowing over the bank, it will not be flowing unfettered from driveways and dirty areas, if you will. When it goes off of a driveway or when it comes off of a car, it goes into a storm drain and is filtered out before it is sent into the pipe that goes over the bluff and then dispersed at the bottom of the bluff. And that is a state requirement that we deal with on every project. The number of variances and waivers, that was something that was brought up. The Oak Harbor Municipal Code allows for permissive variations, and I put that in quotes there because a variance is significantly different than what we're looking at. A permissive variation is allowed by our PRD code to vary certain items from Chapter 19, which is the zoning code, and Chapter 21, which is our subdivision code. And while there are no limits on the number of such variations, the applicant has requested 14. 10 of those are specifically related to the smaller lot size. When you have a smaller lot, you're going to have smaller setbacks. You're also going to affect the total square footage and the percentage of lot coverage that you have. One of those is in regard to the straightness of the lines, and when we put in our staff report that we didn't feel that there was an issue there, it's one of those things where we have a pie-shaped lot, so the applicant said, well, our lines aren't straight. They're pretty straight by the standards of what we look at as far as subdivisions are concerned. Two are in regard to the design of the private roadway. It serves nine houses, there's one roadway that serves nine houses, there's another that serves two. Those are going to have sidewalks on one side of the street and be narrower than typical. And then the final one relates to the location of sewer services within the easement. There's going to be two houses that have a sewer service within one easement. Other projects, other PRD projects that we have reviewed before have requested multiple variations in the same way, and generally, it's the same situation. You have a whole group of them based because they want to do smaller lots, and that's just the fact of the matter, that's the way it works. Parking was brought up, we just noted that parking meets the standards that are set forth in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code. So going through the review process again, just to briefly touch on that, our code says that the city council shall inquire into the public use and interest proposed to be served by the establishment of the subdivision. That's your job right now is to make sure that that is the case. Our staff report gives you a recommendation, then you recommend approval or denial to the city council. What you're looking at are the preliminary plat, the PRD, the shoreline substantial development permit, landscape plan, and land clearing plan. You have a number of permissive variations that we just discussed, talking about setbacks, lot coverage, straight lot lines, sidewalks, et cetera. Now I wanted to talk about the revised documents that you've just gotten. We have a revised conditions of approval, and we can take a look at that very quickly compared to last time. We just have a couple of changes to it. Under condition number one, we wanted to include that the applicant shall correct the site area figures on the preliminary plat to read 1,004, excuse me, 142,262 square feet, which equals 3.27 acres. The reason that we have that on there is because as we went between one set of plans to another, there was a minor change in the acreage on there, and we want to make sure that we all understood it's 3.27 acres, that is the correct number. Under condition number six, the applicant has requested that we change the maximum lot coverage from 40 to 42 percent because they had a minor change in one of their house plans to request just a tiny bit more lot coverage. And then, condition number 19, there was some discussion at the previous meeting about garbage truck turnaround, and the applicant feels that they can provide that in the existing street network that they have there without including an additional hammerhead turnaround. So, what we put on there is final design will be reviewed by the city engineer, reviewed and approved by the city engineer to ensure that that is of sufficient size and design for our garbage trucks.
Before, was that a waiver?
Correct. It was not a waiver, it was something that was included as kind of a late addition to a set of plans there that was redlined in, that they needed to include like a hammerhead turnaround. And after discussion between the applicant and our traffic engineer, we determined that that wasn't necessary after all.
Can you put up the slide that shows where that will be?
I don't know if I have that on here, to be perfectly honest. In your set of plans...
Could you have, Ray, this one?
Oh, there we go. Thank you. All right. So, originally, the city engineer had requested that they put a turnaround right in this area here, and they indicated that they would be able to provide a turnaround in this existing bend in the road essentially by placing garbage cans in this area here, so we determined that that would be sufficient for what we need for our garbage trucks.
So if you live in lot nine, you've got to wheel your garbage cans a good ways down to where they would be picked up?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. And then finally, we also had a letter from Jacob Cohen regarding some trees that are existing on the lot, and they requested a condition be placed on there, and we have not done that because we wanted to have that discussion here tonight to make sure that those two trees, and I believe they're walnut trees, to remain on site. And that is something the applicant has discussed previously and I think is amenable to doing, so if we need to add that as a condition on there, we can write that in also fairly easily, so I just wanted to bring that up too.
So if you write that in as a condition of approval, how long do those trees have to stay there? Forever? Five years? Till the thing's built? What's the requirement there?
That would be a good question and something that we can discuss. I think that you can say in the condition for its natural life.
Okay.
The concern there is partially, you know, to keep the bank stabilized, to keep the bluff stabilized, and large tree roots will do that. At some point, though, that if you have a dead tree that's sitting there and is a blowing-down hazard is no benefit to anybody, so, yeah.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So I believe that concludes...
Ray, I think you were going to go through the revisions to the findings of fact?
That is right. Okay, so just talking about the findings of fact here, that was also in the materials that were given to you tonight. We did include some additional information, and some of this just has to do with the date. That first red line on there talks about the meeting on the 24th day of September and then continued to the 22nd of October, which is tonight. That happens in a couple of places there. It also refers to the add-on packet that you're looking at. And then there is under 1.3V, a significant revision that talks about the project site area of 3.27 acres and the density calculations when we look at that. The project density equalling 3.36 dwelling units per acre when calculated using the entire site, the R1 zoning range of three to six units per acre, this is some of the stuff that I talked about in my presentation. Public comment received regarding this project questioned the inclusion of the privately-owned tidelands as part of the density calculation. Staff views this circumstance as similar to including portions of a property encumbered by a critical area for purposes of calculating a project's density. However, for the purposes of this comparison, staff recalculated the project density excluding the tidelands area. The quote revised project area for density calculation purposes only is then approximately 2.1 acres in size. Using this smaller project area, the density for the project increases to 5.2, 5.2 for dwelling units per acre, a figure which is still within the allowed density range for the R1 zone district, and as included as a finding on there. Going further down, we talk about, again, the applicant shall correct the site area to 3.27 acres, and then the 42 percent lot coverage change, these are all based on This is some of the stuff that I talked about in my presentation. Public comment received regarding this project questioned the inclusion of the privately-owned tidelands as part of the density calculation. Staff views this circumstance as similar to including portions of a property encumbered by a critical area for purposes of calculating a project's density. However, for the purposes of this comparison, staff recalculated the project density excluding the tidelands area. The, quote, "revised project area for density calculation purposes only" is then approximately 2.1 acres in size. Using this smaller project area, the density for the project increases to 5.2 for dwelling units per acre, a figure which is still within the allowed density range for the R1 zone district. And as included is a finding on there. Going further down, we talk about, again, the applicant shall correct the site area to 3.27 acres. And then the 42 percent lot coverage change. These are all based on the conditions of approval. The question about, or excuse me, the condition about the garbage truck turnaround. Another date change on page seven of eight. And a date change on page eight of eight.
So, Ray?
Yes?
Has it been, not that it's a real consequence, but the footprints of the two houses that are being demolished, were they closer to the bluff or further from the bluff than the proposed development?
The one that was already demolished with a demolition permit was kind of in the middle of where the proposed houses are. The one that's still existing on the northern side is significantly closer to the bluff than these proposed houses will be.
Thank you.
Ray, a question with the two trees.
Yes.
In looking at the site plan in respect to where the trees are located with the structure footprint, where are those two trees that they're talking about? I've seen the trees.
Yeah.
I just need to know where, in response to the development.
They're not shown exactly on here, but they are in this general vicinity right here.
So within the 75-foot setback?
Definitely. Much closer than...
So they're behind lots 10 and 11?
Thank you.
Any other questions to staff at this point? We may have others later, Ray, after public comment. At this time, I believe that the applicant has the opportunity to speak if he or she so chooses.
Thank you, Planning Commission members. For the record, my name is Clay White. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I won't spend a long time tonight because there's a lot of information that's in the record, and we provided some testimony at the last public hearing. I think that we just want to go through just a few things. First, just to make sure you understand that we agree with the revised staff report information, the revised recommendations of approval. We agree with the proposed conditions of approval. There's a significant amount that have been proposed by staff. We agree and would implement those. And those include SEPA environmental conditions that were part of an MDNS that was issued by the city. Those have been incorporated into the staff report. So we certainly agree with those SEPA conditions as well. And most important, as part of the staff report, it goes through the conditions of approval for a PRD, both the PRD and subdivision criteria. We agree with the analysis in there. We've provided a significant amount of information within our application demonstrating how we meet the criteria for approval for a PRD and a subdivision, preliminary plat. And just to reiterate that we certainly ask that you make a recommendation of approval on this project. One of the nice things at the last hearing was there was a lot of good questions, not only from the Planning Commission, but from members of the public. So in response to that, we provided some memos that you have in the record. Ray went through a lot of those issues, so I'm not going to touch on them very much. But we provided a letter that went through some of the PRD benefits. So he went through some of the variations that we were asking for, but the letter goes through and provides an outline of the benefits that we're providing. Increased setbacks from property lines. So the houses might be closer together, but we're increasing the setbacks to property lines. Additional open space, native vegetation. And then I know that one of the things when you're looking at a PRD, we were talking about the types of materials that would be used. So we're offsetting the houses a little bit, which is a requirement of the code unless you're doing a PRD and some of the materials that you might use. And so the applicant actually went through the trouble to do these photo simulations that you can see. And I know they look like real houses, but this is actually what they would look like on-site. And so I'll step away from the mic for a second.
We also have them electronically as well so that they can be displayed.
Great. So I won't spend a lot of time on them, but it's nice for the audience to be able to see the materials that are used. And I liked this one because you've been referenced to the trees, so those trees are actually put into the photo montage there.
They're at scale, too.
And they're at scale as well. So it's amazing what you can do to kind of show exactly what a development would look like these days. It's a lot different than when I got into the planning world. So just wanted to provide you some additional information because it's nice to be able to visualize when someone's saying they're going to use different architectural features in a project. And in this case, the applicant's really going all out to make a real quality development that the city would be proud of. I thought that, kind of going through some of the questions from last week, there was the question about the use of tidelands. I thought that Mr. Powers provided a really good analogy. There's always things on sites that are not able to be used as part of the development for a physical lot. Everything from critical areas and buffers to required open space that has to be set aside, areas that are set aside for roads, detention facilities. Sometimes you have utility easements, go on and on and on. And while the tidelands is a unique issue, it's certainly not different than you would see as part of any development that has physical constraints. And so, you know, that's why you place your development in certain areas. There was questions about the setback from the bluff. We provided a separate memo on that. Just to clear it up, it's a 75-foot setback, and so you'll see that in there. Ray did a good job of talking about the density calculations, and it is important to understand that the city, the way they designed their code, is that it's a minimum of three dwelling units per acre. You couldn't divide the property if you were going to create less than three dwelling units per acre. And so that range is between three and six, and we're on the lower end, just above three dwelling units per acre. The tree retention issue, I just want to bring this up for the record. While there's not an objection to retaining the trees, there are CCNRs that are on the property, and there are CCNRs on a lot of properties. But there are some kind of special agreements. So the way that I understand it is that while the landlord may want to retain the trees, it's not fully in his control. You actually have, the neighbors also have to agree to that. There's some special conditions in the CCNRs. So while you could make a recommendation that the city council evaluate a condition to retain the trees as part of a recommendation for approval, we'd probably want to work out with the city staff on language as it goes to the public hearing just to make sure that things are fair and square with you and what your wishes are versus what may be requirements under the CCNRs. And so if you have questions about that, I know that Mr. Thompson's here tonight could answer that. So not shying away if you want to make a recommendation, but just want to make you aware that there are some CCNRs regarding that issue, just like the 75-foot issue also being in some CCNRs. So environmental impacts of the project, we just provide you a little bit more information about those environmental impacts and how they've been addressed significantly through the review under the Shoreline Master Program, State Environmental Policy Act, compliance with critical areas regulations, and the significant amount of reports that we've provided for the record. This has been analyzed thoroughly, and you can see that within the mitigation that's provided or recommended to you by staff. And just finally, there was a couple of recommendations on slight modifications to the recommended conditions. On the recommendation to allow 42 percent coverage for one of the lots, just so that it's said for the record, the modification would allow maximum lot coverage of 42 percent versus 40. But it's important to note that only one lot is proposed to have only over 40 percent coverage, and only two lots are only over 35 percent. And so while the lots are smaller, which leads to more impervious, you know, you're condensing those, so there's actually, you know, it's a much, there's a lot of open space that you get as a counterbalance to that as well. Mark Villaux's here, who's the engineer. I know that you're going to take public testimony, so we're here to answer any questions that you might have after that concludes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I welcome members of the audience to come to the microphone and spend up to three minutes stating any fact or any item that they would like to share with the commission.
Chairman, I believe we do have a sign-in sheet that looks like it's making its way towards you right there.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
And this time, we did have one specific for this item, so you shouldn't have the same challenges you had last time.
Okay. Jim Matthews is first on the list here. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, council members, I really didn't expect to be first up here by any means. But how do you argue with all this stuff? My issue, I guess, might be a little bit old-school. I've been on scenic heights for 13, 14 years as a resident. Been here since 1952. One thing that struck me as I looked at the little tables for signing, two existing single-family lots. That's what I figured I'd see out on scenic heights, some single-family improvements or single residents on these spots. There's been a tremendous amount of variations granted and required by this PRD thing. This PRD thing is foreign to my 85 years of age. It just don't make a whole lot of sense to me. What does make a lot of sense to me is the amount of people that are here in attendance and people that have signed a petition of concern about the impact on the community and the neighbors out there. So I won't go to chapter and verse, you guys. I applaud you. I don't see how you do it, sit there and go through all that paperwork, this section, subsection, and so forth. So thanks for your work. I do appreciate it as a resident of Oak Harbor. But I'd like you to consider the amount of folks that have signed a petition that are concerned about the density. I see no problem with growth. I was a narrowback electrician for 27 years, worked for Clarence Pease, would-be electric, made a good living through growth. And it's a great thing, but I think it needs to be, it's kind of like a prescription medicine to me. If you take, you know, a reasonable amount of it, it's going to be helpful to you. But if you take a little too much, you're going to suffer the consequences. And I can remember a lot of engineering, planning, modern homes came here and did all the home development on the west side of 20. And with that came a lot of engineering as far as wastewater and disposal of surface water was concerned. But many times, you'd have to slow down down by Bill's Chevron service station because there was a foot of water in the road. So just a little bit, I could see five homes out there, fine. But I would ask you just to consider the interest of the folks that have signed the petition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Next is Paige Bates.
Oh, I've signed one.
Ken Hewlett? Terri Hewlett?
Same. I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Terri Hewlett. I live at 2820 Southwest Scenic Heights. And the Planning Commission members, hello. And my comments are just pretty everyday common facts. We built our home in 1993. We were inside the county limits at that time. We followed every rule for setbacks in building plans. We did not remove any vegetation on the bluff at all. And actually, we planted trees to help plant and stabilize the bank. In contrast with what this developer has been doing, I have shared videos and pictures with the city staff of the developer himself standing and watching the small excavator and at times assisting by lowering a worker over the bluff to cut the trees off the bluff. That bluff impacts not only that section, but also our part of the bluff. We're 100 feet from that project. And many of the reports that you were given by the developer, many of the statements were incorrect. Water runoff is a big misconception. There is a lot of groundwater. There are no community stairs to that beach, as stated in the PRD. Those are on our private property. There are many animals. There's deer, there's rabbits, there's otters, nesting eagles and owls. All of those trees that are going to be removed, that helps stabilize that bluff completely. On a Saturday afternoon in March of 2019, I witnessed an underground oil tank being removed from the front of that house that is still standing. I contacted the city. There was never a permit issued for that. I'm not sure if it was ever tested for contamination or not. The traffic is a huge concern about having delivery trucks, UPS, FedEx, postal service, paratransit, if you have visitors, fire and EMT vehicles in there. We've been told that the houses are going to be equipped with sprinkler system, so does that mean if there's a fire, the fire department doesn't have to respond? Getting an emergency vehicle into that development is going to be a challenge. Is someone's life and home really worth it? We all agree we are for growth and need affordable housing, but this development is completely out of line with fitting in rest of the neighborhood and surrounding land. Where is the developer going to be when those houses start sinking? I'm really disappointed in the fact that we, as concerned citizens, get three minutes to voice our concerns, and the developer and his professionals who visit the site maybe once or twice have all sorts of time to sell their idea to the city. We who live in this neighborhood know the problems, and we've had to deal with washouts, sloughing of the bluff, flooded basements, and wet yards even during the summertime. We know a thing or two because we've seen a thing or two. So please, take all of this into consideration on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri. Ken Hewlett?
That's a tough act to follow. I'm Ken Hewlett, 2820 Southwest Scenic Heights Street. Members of the commission and Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I strongly disagree with much of the information contained in the application. Looking at the PRD ordinance is different than the standard zoning ordinance, so there has to be a choice to pick that. The ordinance states, the PRD ordinance states that encourage, to encourage planned residential development in performance-based standards with view corridors, preserve community character through quality design, encourage private and public preservation of undeveloped open spaces, encourage a sense of community through a spectrum of housing types, and further to have adequate safety for pedestrians and cyclists, and encourage low-impact sustainable development. I don't know how this meets that. The applicant states that they're using the benefits of the flexibility of the PRD ordinance to reduce lot sizes under the standard under the PRD of 7,200 square feet. Some of the lots turn out to be less than half of that standard. They require, of course, a significant number of waivers that has been already discussed. And by the time you institute all the waivers, there really are no standards left, in my opinion. Clearly, they selected this approach for the PRD and requested waivers to maximize profitability and not compatibility with the surroundings or protection of safety and ecological standards in the area. The critical area of the bluff in the Shorelines Management Act speak to those values as well. The bluff along scenic heights is classified as critical, and we believe it to be an unstable area, and we've presented plenty of information on that topic already. Is the developer going to be required to guarantee that once bluff erosion occurs, as predicted by the geotech firms, even a couple of feet? Who's going to, who's going to deal with the setbacks at that time? If your 75-foot setback goes to 65 feet, what do they have to do? Demolish the houses or move them? You know, you're looking at conditions of approval, but you're also looking at it in an unstable environment. I don't feel that the degree at which the standards are being modified warrants the approval of this in this density. As was mentioned, you know, there are over 100 residents and property owners in the neighborhood have commented and signed petitions against this development or requesting that it be reviewed and density reduced or, you know, other things done to make it more compatible. The people that get paid have most of the time and the efforts as far as making the analysis on these things. But we are over a hundred residents and property owners in the neighborhood, and these comments are because we care about our neighborhood and the people and the environment that we live in. Thank you very much. I've got copies of this if you want them for...
Thank you, Ken. Lynn Bergen?
Hello, I'm Paul, Vice Chairman. I'd like to have a few documents for you guys, but it's only because I'm paraphrasing, and I wanted you to have a better, having a whole time with you. Here we go.
Angeline Bergen, twenty-five, Twenty, Southwest Pete's Lane. The Shoreline Management Act of nineteen seventy-two was enacted in recognition that our shorelines are among the most valuable and fragile of our state's natural resources. It is policy of the state to protect the interests of all people and is paramount to the management of our shorelines. RCW ninety, fifty-eight, Twenty states, unrestricted construction on privately-owned shorelines is not in the best public interest. This RCW was enacted to prevent harm in uncoordinated and piecemeal development. It recognizes statewide interests over local interests. Additionally, the introduction to Oak Harbor Shoreline Management Plan restates the above and further states that it serves as a guide and regulation for future development of shoreline resources in a manner that reflects local conditions. Furthermore, Department of Ecology Publication zero-nine, zero-six, zero-two-nine states one of the shoreline management plan's purpose is to encourage reasonable and orderly development of shorelines. It is the state's intent and our duty to protect our natural resources for future generations. These shoreline management acts and plans give you, our planning commissioners, the discretionary tools to modify or disapprove of this PRD proposal. This proposal lies in a fragile bluff conservancy. This bonus density of this proposal is not in keeping with the neighborhood's single home character or the state's intent to preserve our fragile shoreline. It is not reasonable or appropriate in this area. It will benefit few, may harm more. It will have negative effects in our neighborhood and is poor stewardship of the fragile bluff. We, ordinary citizens, expect and rely on our commissioners to exercise due diligence in deciding the future of Oak Harbor. Development should not be on a case-by-case basis, but should be implemented in an orderly, comprehensive manner. All of these acts and plans are well and good, however, they need human commitment to be successful. I'm no geologist, but I know what I see and live with. I see the ravages of both surface and groundwater on our property and south to this PRD. Water runs and seeps year-round, you can see it and hear it. And I'm wondering how many of you that are south of us, going towards this development, have experienced bluff erosion or slips in, say, the last fifteen years? And how many of you had to retroactively install water diversion systems? Yeah, just about everybody. I've lived in Oak Harbor off and on for over sixty years. My husband and I have worked here, we decided to retire here, we raise our kids here, we've contributed time and money to various causes. For over two years, I've spent one night a month at our homeless shelter, The Haven. We care about Oak Harbor, we want to see it evolve and thrive, and we do not believe that this bonus PRD is in the best interest of Oak Harbor. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Lynn. Joe Bergen?
Like Ken Hewlett, I have a hard act to follow. Joe Bergen, twenty-five, Twenty, Pete's Lane off Scenic Heights. In addition to all the negative environmental impacts that have been discussed, I have reservations about the infrastructure. I have been in and out of Oak Harbor since nineteen seventy-nine, have seen the dramatic changes in growth and character of the town, especially the traffic, which affects the quality of life for residents and visitors. Having lived on Scenic Heights since two thousand four, we've experienced a significant increase of vehicular and bike traffic through this corridor to Highway Twenty. It is not uncommon to have traffic backups on the intersection of Scenic Heights and Highway Twenty, coming both onto and off of Scenic Heights. Because of the congestion on Highway Twenty around Swan Town, many non-residents have taken to Scenic Heights as a preferred alternate route. With eleven units of additional housing on this PRD, and the nine housing lots for sale across the street, we have significant concerns for traffic congestion, egress from our homes, and safety on Scenic Heights. The Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Model of two thousand seventeen, which was used in this particular application, states that the daily average trips per household is nine-point-four-four trips per day, which combined with these eleven units and the nine lots across the streets is almost two-hundred trips per day added to Scenic Heights, already heightened usage, will be further exacerbated by the large developments near and along Highway Twenty. As part of the resolution to this impact, the developer is paying traffic impact fees, which according to your recently published comparisons in Washington State for two thousand eighteen, which compares four counties and seventy-two cities, and in your own two thousand fifteen transportation plan, Oak Harbor has one of the lowest fees in the state. And upon further review of that transportation plan, Scenic Heights is a second-tier effort, ranked twenty-sixth out of thirty, to take place sometime in the next twenty years. And that project is only for improving bike safety and access. As previously discussed, Washdott's plan for Highway Twenty will not begin until two thousand twenty-seven to two thousand twenty-nine. In general, it seems that development and the potential monies it brings to the city are usurping, which is logistically and environmentally supportable. The emphasis on increasing density, allowing numerous variations and waivers of building codes on sensitive bluff areas, and the prolonged infrastructure upgrades support a perception of build it and deal with the numerous ramifications later, which affects both citizens and Oak Harbor's coffers in the long run.
Thank you, Joe.
Commissioners, again, my name is Mary Williford. I live at thirteen oh-one Catalina. Actually, I lived out at the Marina. For fifteen years, I lived on the bluff side of Scenic Heights, two thousand two to two thousand seventeen. I will tell you, that's a living, moving bluff. And working closely with the neighbors on Pete's Lane, there was six neighbors, or six owners, property owners. It was tough to work together to protect the bluff, had discussions about tree removal, planning, reducing traffic on the lane. We had standing water on a vacant lot at all times of the year. In fact, and you could see where there was just a little bit of movement all the time going on, not all the time, but you could see from year to year the movement of the bluff, or what was coming down off the hills. So to think that we've got eleven more potential property owners who are going to be responsible bluff owners is pretty hard to imagine. The issue really is the density. That many more people who are supposed to take care of this bluff. And I honestly can't believe that this project, which is obviously well thought out and is a long way in the process, has actually gotten this far, with the city being responsible for that bluff. And all you have to do is walk from Friend Marsh to the devastating slide that closed Scenic Heights, down farther south. And if you haven't walked it, then I don't think you can make, walked the beach and looked at that bluff, I don't think you can make an informed decision on this, honestly. And these folks are just trying to save their property. And you know, the nice, the good news and the bad news about a bluff is, it doesn't recognize property lines. So if these folks aren't being responsible at this level of density, it's going to affect everybody who is here, who's asking you to reconsider the level of density and what's going to go on at this property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Cindy Hoskins?
Cindy Hoskins, twenty-nine, Ninety, Southwest Scenic Heights Street. And we have lived on our property since nineteen eighty-nine, owned it since nineteen eighty-eight. The same thing that you're hearing from many of the other people is our concern, the bluff. It does erode, it's continuing to erode. And to put that kind of density on property that we've all experienced having these issues with seems reckless and irresponsible. So it is with great respect that I'm here tonight to speak against the project. Who and why would someone plan a community in the middle of a single-family homes? Would it be fair to say, an out-of-town developer looking to make a profit, with no regard or integrity to our community? It is so wrong. Please consider, private property rights are not a license to compromise the ecosystem nor other property owner's quality of life. That is so wrong. The integrity of the bluff is monumentous, and full attention to managing it now is what we need to do to preserve it. Think. Eleven homes are proposed to be built in the middle of a neighborhood that is considered single-family lots. It is so wrong. Scenic Heights is barely walkable, the street is barely walkable now. Improvements to the road and sidewalk should be in place before any additional planned traffic is approved. The safety of all of our residents is at stake. Perhaps this project is totally in compliance with the law and what the city planner is recommending for you to pass tonight. Voting is a right and a privilege, but what is right is right, and what is wrong is wrong. If you agree this development is wrong, don't vote yes because you're afraid of being sued. Please consider working with the existing property owners to make this right. And you have five votes tonight. How many in the audience vote no? Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, Terri, is it Nelson or Nielsen?
I have submitted by...
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Kathy Horrigan, twenty-seven, Twenty, Southwest Scenic Heights Street. As business owners in the city of Oak Harbor, my husband and I are definitely for growth in our community. We do see a need for more housing, for sure, but it needs to be managed, and it needs to make sense. We don't feel that building eleven homes on one-point-six acres makes sense on any lot of that size, let alone the critical bluff area of Scenic Heights. Those of us that live on Scenic Heights see the extensive water runoff and the many underground springs we have in our property, year-round, not just on the rainy days. And we feel that construction of these many homes would be extremely detrimental to the stability and safety of the critical bluff area. The planning ordinances say that impacts on public safety should be considered. So let's talk safety. With increased development on the southwest portion of the city and the county to the south, also comes increased traffic. Scenic Heights is identified as a minor arterial street, but as the only north and south option to Highway Twenty, it's increasingly being stressed beyond its design. Scenic Heights is a narrow, hilly, windy road. There are no safe places for schoolchildren, pedestrians, cyclists, emergency vehicles, service, or construction vehicles. Current residents are continually challenged to get safely out of our own driveways because of the blind curves and steep driveways. Scenic Heights Street also lacks width, sidewalks, sightlines, and effective storm drainage. And the hillside development would only add to this already unsafe traffic issue, which is just one more reason that this project does not make sense. Thank you for listening and your consideration.
Thank you, Kathy. Connie Matthews?
Connie Matthews, thirty-two-hundred Southwest Scenic Heights Street. I'm wondering if it's permissible to show you a few pictures that were taken this morning by the bluff area. I'm hoping that's okay.
Yep, it's all right with you.
Those pictures are of a home that is two doors down from us on thirty-two-hundred Southwest Scenic Heights Street. And that happened about seven years ago. And my question, and who's liable when that home slips down halfway down that bluff? Is it the ones who gave the permit to have that done? Or is it the homeowner that's liable for that? So that is one of the questions that I would like you to think about, the stability of the bluff. Because that is right next to someone's patio where the bluff slipped down, and that's only two doors down from us. So I want you to consider what happens when this runoff and water comes gushing down from the hillside down to Scenic Heights, bluff area. And as you can see by one of the pictures, the bulkhead is in place and has nothing to do with that slide, because it is stable, the bulkhead is there. But that slide happened not from the water side, but from the top side. So I want you to take that into consideration as you determine whether the bluff is stable or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Pat Gardner?
Pat Gardner, Shelley Lane, off of Scenic Heights. I'm up on the hill, above the bluff. I get, you consider the people that are above the cliff people. I get a lot of runoff. I had to put a French drain up above my house. There is a lot of drainage from above the cliff people that's going across the road or underground through those natural streams and such, and affecting them, and it can affect the cliff also. But we need to consider that runoff, not just what's on Scenic Heights to the cliff, but above, and how that drainage is going to affect this development and that other development that's across the street. But that is something to be considered, because there is a lot of runoff coming down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat.
Good evening. Patty Cohen, twenty-eight, Thirty, Southwest Scenic Heights Street. I want to thank the commission for extending this hearing and allowing adequate time for the commissioners to review all the information that has come your way on this item. This is a unique piece of property. The Scenic Heights neighborhood is home to the only high-bank waterfront... The Scenic Heights neighborhood is home to the only high-bank waterfront property in the city and is designated residential low intensity. This defines the integrity and the character of the neighborhood. There are numerous references in all of our planning documents talking about the importance of preserving and maintaining neighborhood character. In the review of this application, the term and the reference to the existing character of the neighborhood is almost nonexistent. Variances. Variances are discretionary tools that the city can grant in unusual situations that also help to provide for extra safety, health, and welfare of the community. Granting the variances in this PRD give little to no measurable benefit to the general public. The proponent is the primary beneficiary. If you cannot do this project in such a way where you recognize and incorporate the community values and standards and balance them against the proposal, then what's happened to us? I want to bring your attention to one of the seven environment designations in the Shoreline Management Plan, and I've given a copy to all of you on that. The Residential Bluff Conservancy. This is zone single-family, we've talked about that, but it's also designated for low-intensity residential, and you can find that in the Oak Harbor Comp Plan. Since both zoning references are mentioned, there is an implied distinction between single-family and low-intensity residential. A petition with over eighty-five signatures was turned in expressing concern over the intense density proposed and the impact that it would have on the character of the neighborhood. Citizens had a certain expectation, they're vested, it's what they bought into. It's my belief the absence of acknowledging the integrity and the character of the neighborhood in Scenic Heights and the rights of the citizens were negated and dismissed in this analysis. To the commissioners, you've got a critical role. I've always believed that in the disposition of land use matters, the most appropriate guiding principle is to seek balance between community values and that of the development interests. There shouldn't be a winner or a loser. Existing property owners have rights too. It's the commissioner's job to protect and preserve those values in your decisions. They should not be made at the expense of one party over the other. At the end of the day, you want to assure the community the process was balanced, it reflects community values, and it was driven by community involvement. In essence, we define what we want our neighborhoods to look like. To have players outside of the planning process attempt to redraw how they want to view community development, it's just not how the system's supposed to work. And I have one final comment. This example that we have of the upgraded design of the development, this example of upscale development, I find it somewhat insulting that an upscale development, the appearance of this upscale development, is supposed to dismiss the concerns that we have for the intense density of this project. Thank you.
Thank you Patty. Kevin Carmen.
Hello council members. My name's Kevin Carmen, forty-five-plus-year resident of Oak Harbor. I'd like to state some facts. There's been a lot of opinion up here, some facts, but I'd like to state some facts. Concerning water and runoff and erosion. A year ago August, about fourteen months ago, the city spent over $165,000 containing the upstream, the uphill waters from the ditch on Scenic Heights Road, capturing all that drainage water, the surface water that was coming onto these properties, running into a manhole, going through new piping, going down over the bluff, piping going over the bluff to the bottom of the bluff, where then it encounters a dispersion tee which encounters all the energy from the water and disperses it. Now prior to that work being done, there was a culvert going underneath Scenic Heights Road which did, surface waters coming down, the waters did go through that culvert and went along the property. That is no longer happening. Those surface waters are being captured, put into state-of-the-art piping, and goes over the top down to the bottom and then disperses. This project on all the impervious areas, which is the streets, the roofs, all that waters are going to be captured, put into a drainage system, which will then go into three major filters, cleaning filters, before it will then tie into the city piping that was installed fourteen months ago. On top of that, the upper houses along with the retaining wall, from finished design down to the bottom of the foundations, is roughly going to be about ten feet down. Any underground waters coming to those upper four houses, and there's a retaining wall between those two houses, will be captured in a drain, underground drain. Those waters will also be captured, piped through filters, will then go into the new drainage system and over the bluff. So in fact, and I've studied this project very well, in fact, this project will capture most of the water that people are concerned about on the erosion, go through filtering process, and on down to the beach, and dispersion tee which will catch the energy and disperse The project is highly thought out, very thoughtful of erosion and over the bank and all those... I think a lot of the members or people that have talked about erosion and whatnot, that this project, when it is completed, will actually be more stable than most of the projects on Scenic Heights Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you Kevin. Dave Bonvalour. I hope I didn't butcher that too badly.
I'm used to it. My name is Dave Bondwar. I've been a resident at 3148 Southwest Scenic Heights since 1990. I double-checked the math, that's almost thirty years. My concern is city and taxpayer liability and public safety issues resulting from dense urban-level development on a watershed outlet relying on a single drainage system with no apparent redundancy. My first project after moving into my residence was diverting runoff from roof driveways and road into a contained drainage system on a smaller scale, not unlike the new drainage system now serving the hillside PRD area watershed. My objective was to minimize the impact of surface water moving toward the bluff edge and reducing as much as possible, one of several natural processes which result in erosion and slope failure. Over the years, I have personally seen continued erosion and spot failure of unstable slopes along Scenic Heights Streets, including my own, by several other processes other than surface water, namely natural seepage caused by upland infiltration and conquering more restrictive subsurface formations, wave cut at the base, and subsequent slabbing off of the bluff face itself, and freeze-thaw cycles resulting in spot slope failure. Despite my continuous maintenance of this surface water control system, after every rain and snowfall, I have had several bluff failures ranging in size from a few cubic feet to approximately twenty cubic yards, and any one of which could have blocked my drainage system quickly, resulting in far greater impacts. In two cases, partial blockage of the system resulted in slope failure within hours. The proposed PRD is at the terminus of a much larger watershed protected by a single recently-installed system belonging to the city of Oak Harbor. While proposed setbacks based on bluff slope recession may appear adequate, will the developer assume any liability for the PRD in the event of slope and its system failure? The proposed dense-packed PRD appears to be 100% dependent on the newly-installed drainage system never failing. A slope failure common to this type of bluff geology can block drain outlets at the base of bluffs, or catch basin inlets to the west side of Scenic Heights Street become blocked with debris during rain or snow events. This type of occurrence is not uncommon. However, rarely would an even partial blockage of a relatively isolated drainage system have the potential to directly impact a new densely clustered residential development located directly at the base of a watershed terminus. In my opinion, the proposed development relies on many variances by the city, and every aspect of public liability and safety must be fully addressed before further approvals are given. Other questions? What is the nature of the agreement for this PRD to directly hook into the system? Does this agreement mean that other developers in the watershed would be able to hook in also? Is there any provision for some assumption of liability by the developer? Have the cumulative impacts of similar development in this area been considered? This is something I haven't heard mentioned. What is the cumulative impact of allowing this type of density development?
Dave, your three minutes is up.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much Dave.
Good evening gentlemen.
Hello Keith.
My name is Keith Fackema. I live at 2571 Southwest Peach Lane, which is just off Scenic Heights. I've lived on the bluff above Scenic Heights for a long time, and I've seen lots of changes, some good and some not so good. Over the years, I've seen traffic changes, I've seen topographical changes, and I've seen a lot of water runoff. Seems to me that under a series of technical loopholes, that there are additional changes And that concerns me. What concerns me, I think, about most of all though, is the fact of unintended consequences. And you folks, I believe, are probably at a point where your minds probably are made up. I think it would be a huge mistake to go ahead without thinking very carefully about what's going to happen, not today, not tomorrow, but five, ten, and fifteen years down the road. Because those unintended consequences will come back to bite you eventually, you can count on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Keith.
Hi, I'm Jill Johnson, 926 Southwest Fairhaven Drive. I'm not an expert on this project. I came primarily to be supportive of you planning commissioner members. I've had a lot of coffees with different individuals who are impacted by this, you know how passionately they feel about it. I sit in seats similar tiers. The developer has rights. As I'm listening to this presentation, I'm very clear about the fact that a property owner has rights, and those rights need to be defended and represented, even in the midst of a lot of public pushback. But then there's this other role that the planning commission plays, and I know it because I sat on it. And I sat on this comprehensive planning task force that former mayor Patty Cohen put me on, which got me started in community service, which is that part where you shape your place, where you really put some thought into what you want to look like and who you want to be. And that's what our comprehensive plan is about, and that's what the community has spent a lot of time thinking about. And so as you go through and weigh these choices about what a developer is allowed to do, and respecting the fact that they have a property right, you also have this responsibility to say, how do you weigh the community concerns in that same process? So you can say things like, this is how you would mitigate, these are the expectations you have. You don't have to grant the maximum, you don't have to grant a variance, you don't have to agree with any of that. What you can do is say yes, this developer is entitled to certain things. But the existing property owners also have entitlements as well, and the community has expectations based on the development of these comprehensive plans and codes, and that they are expecting you to uphold quality of life issues and safety concerns and all those things as well. And only you can weigh those issues out. But it is your responsibility to weigh those issues out, to explore the tensions of what those are. I know my comments don't make it easier for you. I know that the decisions are hard. You want to do the very best, or you wouldn't be devoting your time here. It's just the best looks like different things at different times. And part of what you have to do is sort through the long-term consequences, the short-term consequences, our fear of change, how much of this is fear, how much of this is real? We can control what we want to look like as a community within these constraints that the state has set for us that says you must be dense. But we also have some ability to influence our own community, and that's what your task to do and only the planning commission. I mean, I kind of want to be up there because it's fun, but maybe not tonight. So good luck to you.
There's an empty seat right there Jill. And I think we have an old placard of yours Jill Johnson.
I think that's why they kicked me off.
Thank you Jill, you did not get kicked off. I want the record to show that. Last person is Paul, is it Paul Glenn? Paul, I can't make out. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Please take the mic, state your name. Off we go.
Hi, my name is Jay Longdoe, and I live at 926 Walker Heights Road. Let's address the water management issue. I build all over the island, I have over thirty years' experience. And one of my key questions is on this elaborate drain system that they have after the project is built. Who's going to be responsible for maintaining this? Is it going to be the homeowners that are going to do this on these eleven lots or these eleven houses? I don't think they'll be doing that. So who's going to be actually responsible to maintain that, to keep that bank under control? Second thing is, I've built all over the island, and I've seen the soil conditions all over. I've seen what really happens. We waterproof foundations, we put footing drains, we put roof drains in, we go to elaborate situations, and we still have groundwater situations where we put sump pumps in. I was just at a house today that sits on top of a hill up by Strawberry Lane where I put a sump pump in, and I'm still having water issues. We spent thousands of dollars to try to manage this water, and it wasn't taken care of. My own house that I got approved for just out of city limits in the county, I wanted to put a dry well in, and I wanted to drain into the front ditch. The county would not let me drain into that ditch because it eroded part of Scenic Heights and shut the road down. There's a reason why they did that. I had to take my water management elsewhere. We still have a lot of water issues. I get water from coming down the hill that drains through the back of our property. So as this gentleman pointed out, this elaborate drain system, once this project is allowed, then there'll be other projects, and there's going to be more water. Waldron's going to be building a whole bunch of houses. We're going to be introducing more and more water, and more activity closer to that bank is going to destabilize that over time. So the real question is, is how, after these houses are approved, if they are approved, how is this going to be controlled? Who's going to be liable? I've seen, my in-laws live down the road, I've seen erosion on their own bank, and they have vegetation that's protecting their banks. So who's going to be responsible for that, and who's going to be cleaning the system out? Because it will get clogged all the time. And if there is an erosion on the bank and it goes over the drains and clogs it, that's going to cause further erosion. Who's going to be responsible for that at that point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a call?
Yes, take, you'll have to take the mic.
You'll have to take the mic, ma'am, please, and state your name, please.
My name's Barbara Arms, and I've been listening to all this. I haven't been out there. But, the thing is, who is going to be responsible for the drain? Because I don't know if you're aware, we weren't aware when we bought the house in the city. We live on Noonan Loop. This little happy thing sits on our property. It's a drainage system. Oak Harbor has over 50 to 100 of these. And guess who's responsible for? I am. It's like a septic system. They come out every year to inspect it, and if there's something wrong with it, I get to pay for it. So when you're thinking about that, who is going to be paying for it? The city or the homeowner? And if the city, it could be kind of expensive. So I'm just saying, when you're thinking about things, you don't always realize what you're getting.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else like to speak to the issue? Jake Cohen.
Yes, my name is Jacob Cohen. I reside at 2830 Southwest Scenic Heights Street. My home is completely, exactly contiguous with this piece of property. I first like to say that I'm very proud of all the people who've come out here and voiced their opinions. A lot of people can be shy, and I'm glad to see that my fellow citizens and the people who live on the street I live on have come forward and spoken their hearts out, and I applaud you. Secondly, I want to make a technical correction to what Mr., the proponents engineer, I think it was Mr. Clay, I don't think he was aware of the letter that was sent to the city that was where, basically, Cohen and Hewlett, who are part of this restrictive covenant concerning the 75-foot growth area, where we concur and say that we specifically find that these two deciduous trees do not block our view, and we want these two deciduous trees, in fact, to stay there forever, or, well put by Mr., one of the city's officials, for the tree's natural life. At some point, everything dies. We die. Luckily, trees live a lot longer than us. These trees have probably been there for 300, 400 years. I mean, they're magnificent trees, and they just suck up hundreds of gallons of water and preserve the slope. Now, what I personally have to say, I'm not going to go over what everyone has said here because I think it's been well stated. But what I want to point out is, and this word hasn't been used up till now, what you're doing here tonight will set a precedent, because we've got all these conservancy, above conservancy projects here that can have, basically, their density increased by using the wetlands or basically the tidelands. So what you do here can be done over and over again on every lot on the scenic heights. All those houses could be torn down. We could end up with a gigantically packed area out there that would not be appropriate. So you have to, I think somebody alluded to the fact that what you're doing here is planning for the future, but there's another word for that, is you're setting a precedent. If you allow this to happen to this density, then you have to allow anyone else who comes forward in the same position to do this, because otherwise it would be very inconsistent. I believe that the project should happen, but not to the size of what it is. I think the four or five houses would be more in keeping with the neighborhood, and that the, that the size of this is incompatible with the environment, it's incompatible with the neighborhood, it's incompatible with the traffic patterns, and you have the right to either reject it in whole, accept it in whole, or suggest modifications. And I'm suggesting you suggest a modification. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jake. Any other takers on public input? Going once, going twice? I close this segment of the hearing. Now's the time for us to ask questions of we have, of staff, of the public.
I got a question for Ray.
Yes, sir.
When I made my trip over there and looked at the lot, I was able to access the beach through a stairwell. I forgot whose stairwell that was, the private-owned stairwell. But when I was accessing it, you could clearly tell that the land was moving. Like, the stairwell was not straight. It looked like it had moved. At the bottom of the basin, you actually had slough runoff and stuff like that. Is this actually being reviewed by the planners or by the engineers?
No, it's not being reviewed by the planners. It's being reviewed by the engineers.
Right.
And the third-party review that we had previously, there was a conclusion between our staff engineers and the engineers that were hired by the applicant, that they were essentially very close in their kind of analysis of where the numbers line up. And the conclusion is that 75 feet, we're using a 50-foot buffer and a 25-foot safety buffer beyond that, is appropriate for the lifetime of the structures, and that's how it was described in the application. So when you have a situation where you're talking about, you know, X number of inches or feet per year, that's averaged out over a long period of time. And sure, there might be a big slough this year that takes 10 feet of bank, and it might stay stable for the next 100 years, and then you average that out over that time period. So there's movement, sure. And when you have a staircase, a little bit of movement might suddenly tip that stair a lot. So there is that issue, too.
Okay. Another thing I was looking at, with the plot, how it's done right now, we still have the basin in there, correct?
The basin?
The water basin area in between the two lots?
Oh, the pipe?
Not the pipe. I'm talking about when I was walking through it, there was a clear, almost like a ditch.
Okay, that will be, the grading of the property will essentially remove that, because that's where the water used to flow that now flows through that pipe.
Right. But looking at this, the, where was it? The first graph, it was graph 01. I can't find the page number on it right now. But in between the houses, you've got four houses, or you've got eight houses on the right, you've got eight houses on the left, looking eastward from the street, from scenic heights road. You still have a lot of land in between that. How much are we pulling off of that?
Okay, are we referring to this area here?
Yes, that right there.
I'm not certain what the exact numbers are for grading.
My concern is, is, yes, we've got two, about 2.3, 2.4 acres is what we're looking at. But now when you take that out of the 2.4, what are we actually looking at?
Oh, that's, can I take that question? So the, assuming that Mr. Philip is referring to the track in the middle of the project there, that's not excluded from the density calculation. So density under Oak Harbor Municipal Code is calculated on the gross site area.
Right.
And so that open space, which is improved open space as part of the project, is not subtracted from the area that you use.
Okay.
Yeah, and to tag on to that, this area here is included as part of the PRD. You're required to set aside open space for the use of the residents there. When we talk about the 3.27 acres, that includes the entire parcel, and that's what we got, the density calculation of 3.4 units per acre. When we took off the area in here that is tidelands, that's how we came up with the 5.6 units per acre, if I remember correctly, I don't remember the exact number, that still put it within range of three to six units per acre. And that's what, you know, people would consider to be kind of unusable area is that tideland area there.
Right. I understand unusable, but then if you take off the 75 feet from that, what do we have, actually?
But again, that's not relevant. Well, I appreciate the question. We have to include that area as part of the overall site area. And so that's partly required as the setback from the Shoreline Master Program. And then the other part of it, of course, is the setback from the geotechnical perspective.
Okay.
Paul?
A couple of my questions got answered, but let me just clarify some things. So, I understand from the presentation that the water runoff from the street is all going into the new line that goes down the bluff to the bottom of the hill. And I understand that this property is exempt, basically, from low-impact development rules because of its location next to the waterfront, where all the water can be drained directly into?
It's exempt from, oh, flow control, thank you. It's exempt from flow control. And what flow control is, is that you have to hold on to it for a certain amount of time so that you're not getting a big surge of water into that water body. So they don't have to hold it. They can allow it just to go straight out. And it is filtered, as was mentioned previously, it's filtered before it goes.
So all the concerns that we had last year about the low-impact development rules, how does that affect this development?
They are proposing to use pervious surfaces and things like that as well. I can let the applicant discuss more of that if you'd like to hear from him.
I think that would be appropriate for the commissioner to hear from the applicant's engineer on that topic.
Good afternoon, or good evening, commissioners. My name is Mark Villacaval, LDC. I'm a civil engineer. And so the way the DOE manual works is that no projects within the city are exempt from LID. However, there are certain criteria that you have to go to, to see if LID is feasible for the different types of LID that you can apply. For this project, we are doing amended soils, which is an LID BMP, so we're ensuring that the topsoil that's put on the lots can grow grass and trees and things well, that is just not, you know, glacial till. But other LID-type facilities and infiltrate water are not really appropriate on this site due to its proximity to the bluff. And so from that standpoint, we're collecting the water, we're treating it, and then releasing it to the sound directly. And so we've gone through the work of showing which of the LID best management practices this site can feasibly do and which ones we can't. And we've applied all of them that we can feasibly do for this site, according to the DOE manual.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Next question, a different subject. The PRD code requires that architectural elevation drawings of all building types and subtypes be included. There's three different designs that are in the packet. Are all of the 11 houses going to be one of those three designs, or does that individual designs come at a next stage?
That is my understanding. What we had from the previous application were the line drawings. What was submitted to you is more detail, including colors and materials.
I had a question about the trees, and it sounds like that's a little bit of a gray area still, those two walnut trees down close to the bluff. But I'm going to move on from that because that's been discussed. The permissive variations that you permitted, there are basically seven to 10 of them, depending on which category you count them out of. One of the permissive variations that you have proposed approving that concerns me is the setbacks, the five-foot setback from the back, the 10-foot setback in the front, three-foot setbacks on the side. And I understand that you can do permissive variations as part of a PRD from the standard R1 zoning requirements. Is there a limit? For example, could you go down and say, okay, I just want one foot all around? At what point can you stop? You know, the, if this is 3.2-some acres, by my calculations, the three to six houses per acre would allow 19 houses. You know, and if you do PRD where you can have a 30% bonus, that's 25 houses. And obviously, that's not realistic.
It's not. The answer to your first question is, yes, they could ask for whatever variation that they thought worked for their property. If people want to have a one-foot yard around their house, then maybe people will buy that. The controlling factor, however, is still that three to six units per acre, that we can't go outside of that. We have to maintain the three to six units per acre. So if they were taking, if that entire 3.27 acres was just a big grass field, they couldn't build 19 or 20 houses on there. They'd still only be able to build, you know, 18, whatever the ratio comes to, they wouldn't be able to go beyond that to get any kind of bonus. And I've heard, you know, the word bonus and density increases and things like that. This has always been within what the R1 code allows for, which is three to six units per acre. The minimum that they could build on this lot is 10. If you were to look at the density requirements, the minimum that you would be able to build on 3.27 acres based on three units per acres is 10 lots. And so what they're doing there is they are taking that density ratio that has been in our code for a long time. It falls under the low-intensity residential designation of the comprehensive plan, and that's what it is. Low-intensity residential is R1, which is three to six units per acre.
So when you look at the section that talks about where you can do these permissive variations, one of the categories is three to six units per acre. So it seems like it would be easier to do a variation and allow two houses per acre than to do seven variations to allow setback changes. And I know that in the city recently, we have done changes to minimum number of houses per acre. We did it recently over on Southeast 10th, where you downsized, and instead of having a minimum of five, you allowed four per acre.
That went through, yeah, that went through a variance. And there is a distinction. That's why I wanted to put that up on the board, that when we showed, there's a difference between a variance and a variation. The variation is specifically for our PRD code, and it goes through you all as a part of a process that you, that the applicant proposes certain increases in design and open space and things like that, in exchange for some of these variations to allow for smaller lots and setbacks. If, in the situation you're referring to over here on 10th, was a variance that went through the hearing examiner, and they had to show that there were hardships involved there. They had to show that there is a reason, something about the property that caused it so that they weren't able to build to that minimum density. And they were able to show that because of a number of easements that crossed that property, access easements, utilities, et cetera, that made it really difficult to cite buildings on the property.
My point is that if somebody wanted to do less than three houses per acre, it would be, it's possible. It's not particularly harder than I would think to do what we're trying to do on this That's all I've got. Thank you.
No one's addressed, at least I don't believe so, the answer or in answer to the question, what happens to that water outfall? Who's responsible if the integrity?
The question came up, if there is something, and this is an assumption on my part, and Steve, you can correct me, that if there is something that happens with the portion that the city constructed and owns, that the city would be responsible for that. If there's any problem with the feeder pipes that go into it on the applicant's property or on the houses, you know, on the individual lots or within the street system, that would be the ownership of the HOA, and the membership of the HOA would be responsible for that.
Does each dwelling have its own feeder system?
Yes.
And if I could add on to that answer, first of all, Ray is correct, that the city has responsibility for the newly-installed public storm drainage infrastructure that starts to the west of here and, or starts to the west side of the street, goes on the street, as has been described. The HOA will have responsibility for maintenance of the onsite features, the private features. And as part of our review of the applicant's proposed CCRs, we will require, our engineering department will require a maintenance manual, basically, that is designed by the project engineer, who has to submit that for our review. So that way, once the project is complete, if it's approved, then the HOA and their contractors know exactly what they're supposed to be maintaining and when and how. Because storm drainage is way more complicated than it used to be, the city started requiring these maintenance manuals a good number of years ago, because we recognized that once the constructor of the project is gone, the knowledge on how to take care of the system wouldn't exist. And so we now have these documents that are part of the chain of title.
Thank you.
I guess that means I'm up.
Right.
This is the first time I've sat on one of these, and I'm not super familiar with planned residential developments. So I'm curious about why this is a PRD. The, I had Sarah very helpfully printed out the purpose and intent section of that part of the code. This is 19 dot 31 dot 010, purpose and intent. "The planned residential development PRD regulations offer applicants regulatory flexibility in return for higher-quality site and architectural design with the intent of encouraging the design of more complete and sustainable neighborhood environments consistent with Oak Harbor's comprehensive plan. The PRD regulations allow and promote design flexibility, pedestrian-oriented development, interconnectivity among uses, sensitivity to the natural environment and natural features, and the coordination of development with adequacy of public facilities." It goes on to talk about a broader range of secondary uses that are available within a PRD. As far as I can tell, none of that is what's going on here. There's nothing specifically encouraging pedestrian usage here, there are no secondary uses that are being requested here. There's clearly design flexibility, but I'm not, there's not any particular coordination of development and adequacy of public facilities. Why is this a PRD?
Good question, Mr. McPeters. The simple answer is, is it's a choice that's available in Oak Harbor Municipal Code, and it's not unusual to Oak Harbor. Most cities have either something called a planned residential development or perhaps a planned unit development, which is the older, old-fashioned term.
Okay.
So a little bit of residential development 101, if you will. There are three basic ways that new lots get created. If it's less, nine lots or less, that's typically what we call a short plat.
Okay.
That is one process, one that does not come through the Planning Commission. If it's more than nine lots and you, and the project does not propose any variations to the zoning standards, so they'll have 7,200-square-foot lots, they'll have the minimum width, the minimum depth, all those things, that's what we might call a regular subdivision or sometimes refer to as a long plat, to go against the short plat. And then the third choice is a planned residential development. And choice, I think, is the operative word there. We, as the city, do not require people to choose the PRD. It is something that an applicant says, we wish to utilize this particular development tool in pursuing development of our property. So I think that's the first part of my response.
Okay.
The second part is, the purpose and intent statement is a broad statement, which is intended to address the features which are possible in a PRD overall, and not to any one particular development for, that is going to check off all of those boxes of the things that you've just enumerated. So in a different physical condition, situation, it would be possible to have interconnectivity from a PRD to maybe a neighborhood commercial that's existing next door, or a shopping center. We would look then to have pedestrian connections from the neighborhood into the commercial center, that kind of an example. We would look for connections between the neighborhood and the nearest transit stop, just by way of example. So I think the purpose and intent statement is broad, on purpose, if you'll pardon the redundancy, and aspects of what that is are encapsulated here, but it's not a requirement that every project meet every sentence in the purpose and intent statement.
Commissioner Freeman, in the last meeting, which I diligently watched, was concerned that the Planning Commission may have no legal option but to approve this project, given the circumstances. And from what Ray has said, this project could not be built with fewer than 10 houses. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
So the concerns of these people, they don't mind some increased density there, but they think this is too much. Our current code prohibits that. We cannot allow rights crossing to build fewer than 10 units on this property.
That is correct.
Unless they ask for a variance.
Unless they ask for a variance.
Yeah, you can't do it with...
Well, then, so did somebody say, I wouldn't know if I saw him, did somebody say Mr. Thompson is in the room?
Yes, he is.
Mr. Thompson. Why are you building 11 units here?
Mr. Thompson, we need to have you on the microphone, please.
My name's Scott Thompson, 2870 Scenic Heights Road. Despite the fact that people are saying I'm not a resident, I'm actually a resident, and I'm also a longtime Washington resident, retiring in Washington. I spent my entire educational career in Washington, clear through grade school, clear through college. My first project was Canyon Lakes Golf Course in Richland, Washington. I was gifted with the ability in trade school here to be a successful community builder. Many of you live in my homes around the nation. Sir, you've lived in three of my homes over the time. We are a large community development company. I was able to be gifted with that, and I'm coming back home to retire. I believe in highest and best use of property. When we went through this particular project, it was a difficult project. One of the problems was, it has been more or less an area where everyone kind of deposited their water over the years. There was a lot of rerouting that took place, so it was a challenging project to try to work through it. If you'll notice on the waterfront, we meet all of the shoreline management setbacks, we meet all of the shoreline manager widths, so really, the waterfront is just a standard waterfront lot division. There's a lot of lots that width. The four units above was mostly from the semantic standpoint of working through a process that the city has been promoting. We just went through a GMA hearing, Growth Management Act hearing. I listened to those commissioners very carefully about density. This is obviously a showpiece for a Growth Management Act requirement. We are known, and I have 200 national awards on master plan developments, we've built, I don't know, 42 master plan developments over the years, the last 40 years, and this was the best use for that property. I understand the fact that there is an anomaly here, but really, it is an anomaly, that there's tidelands that are associated to this, but even with, without the tidelands, we were just trying to meet the city's minimum requirement. And so getting into the half a lot, or three-quarters of a lot, or whatever you want to do from a rounding error, it ended up fitting for 11 units. But we were told that if we didn't do 10, we weren't going to be able to do anything with the property.
Okay.
So that's pretty much what happened, it was a fit. And as far as the other concerns that have been brought forth today, if you look at the design of this property, where there is a minimum backyard setback, the whole entire system was designed so that everyone could use that large common area that's in the center of the property. So basically, everybody has a huge backyard in their side yards where there isn't a backyard easement. So this has been very well thought out, and I appreciate the fact that staff, you know, worked diligently through this, and the amount of money and effort that's been put into this has been substantial, I can imagine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that actually touches on another question I had for you, Steve. I think that you have said this before, but perhaps not in front of this group of people. When staff gets a project, the staff, the city staff is not in the business of saying, should this be built or should this not be built? It's more a matter of, how can we help you develop your property in best coordination with the laws and regulations in Oak Harbor? Is that a fair characterization?
I think it's a fair characterization. Our role isn't to decide whether something is good or bad, because that implies a level of subjectivity. Our responsibility is to review the application or applications against the standards in the code, and then inform the applicant where he or she is either meeting or not meeting those standards, and work with them so that they come into compliance.
Okay. I took the opportunity, twice in the past week, to take a look at the property. I was astonished at the idea that you would put 11 houses on there. It seems like a very small piece of property, especially given the setback. I feel a little boxed in by the way the regulations are written, that we have this minimum number of houses that have to go on to it. I have no doubt that your team has put together the best plan that they're able to do with the setbacks. I certainly am sensitive to the community's concerns about how, about the development of the bluff. My gut instinct is to not approve this. I'm not entirely sure that we have the flexibility to do that. One of the items, for those of you who don't have these meeting packets, there is a finding of fact that we're going to have to vote on, and that is in here, in this massive paper. Part of the finding of fact at the end says that, here it is, findings of fact, conclusions of law. Section 2.1, "The findings of fact, as noted in the records of the City of Oak Harbor Department Services Development Services Department, upon which the recommendation for approval of the preliminary PRD and associated permits for the Hillside Development Center project made by the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission are proper and have not been reached in an arbitrary or capricious manner nor without due process of law." My question for you, Steve, is what concern would we have to bring forward that would not be arbitrary or capricious, given that the ordinances of Oak Harbor require us to have at least 10 units on this property?
I think the answer to that question lies in perhaps the level of variation that is requested, recognizing that there's not a lot of room, and I use that word purposefully, in terms of adjusting the number of units on this property. And I want to speak to the minimum density in a moment, if you, if it would be okay. I think that the commission certainly has within their prerogative the ability to say that you think that the, lack of a better phrase, trade-off between the requested reductions and setbacks are not offset sufficiently by the features of the project. I mean, that's probably the area that you would operate inside of without running afoul of being arbitrary or capricious. To the minimum density issue, I think, because it's an important one, and I know that it's an important one, but we get that requirement from the Growth Management Act. City of Oak Harbor, as well as other cities and counties planning under GMA, fully planning under GMA, have an obligation to maintain or meet an urban level of development. And while there's no bright line established as to what that is, generally, it's accepted as being somewhere around either three or four dwelling units per acre is the bottom end of urban level development. That's point number one. Point number two, we have an obligation to determine and demonstrate how we're going to accommodate our population projection. And that requires us to consider infill as one of the means by which we're going to provide for housing units for the population that we're projecting, that the state requires us to project for, for 20 years. When you take those two things in combination, you end up with a different development pattern than what you would have seen 25 years ago, prior to GMA. And that, there is an inherent tension in the older development pattern versus the development pattern that we're obligated to promote and accommodate under GMA.
May I tap on something here? We talked about the minimum density, or the minimum units being 10 on this property, or a property this size, and the concept of using a variance to maybe go below that. The problem that I would see with that is that you have to show that there is some sort of hardship that's created by this property that says that you can't put 10 houses on it. We have 11 houses on it now. I think that if a hearing examiner were to take a look at it, he would say, well, it looks like you can put 10 or 11 houses on there, therefore, there is not a hardship. The problem with the variance is, it's not a guaranteed situation. You have to prove your point, you have to show your work. So I just wanted to put that out there also, that we could say, yeah, go get a variance and get, you know, down to X number of lots, but there's no guarantee that that would be accepted.
Sure, I understand that. I think that staff is relying, staff, you, Ray, and you, Steve, are relying on this analogy to the critical areas ordinance, and I understand why you've chosen that. It seems on first look to be a reasonable, but I'm not entirely sure that it is, because absent the critical areas ordinance, in a land that had a wetland on it, you had an example last month of an acre and a half out of a 10-acre parcel, and that reduces the buildable area to eight and a half acres, but you have to consider it to be 10 acres because of the wetland. But the wetland could be built on, absent the critical areas ordinance. That bluff and the tideland couldn't be built on even if we were in a completely lawless state. It's just not buildable. And so for that purpose, I think that the smaller area, what did we say, 2.4 acres excluding the tidelands?
It was 1.6.
Well, it's 1.6, but I think that excludes the 75-foot setback. I think that we said it was 2.4, something like...
2.1.
2.1? That seems to me to be a more reasonable area to consider in this parcel. Now, there would have to be an argument made, and a hearing examiner perhaps convinced of that. But that number, then with our three-point, or three units, three to six units per acre, would bring us down to something like 6.3 houses on this, in this project, which I think is a lot closer to the number that these folks in the audience would be comfortable with.
Yeah, and that would be the minimum, and he could still apply for the maximum, which...
Of course.
...in this case would be pretty close.
Right. But I have a sense that one of Mr. Thompson's concerns is, he had to reach a certain minimum, and this would be a smaller minimum for you to reach, sir.
And I'd love to speak to that.
Oh, please, feel free.
So, Scott Thompson. Actually, I was kind of afraid I wasn't going to get to the minimum.
Okay.
So this is a little bit of a surprise to me, and in addition to that, going through the product mix of the homes themselves, you know, because you actually have to do a, you know, we do a study on what the marketability of the homes are, too. To take one home out of this, based on the way that this project was, the way that the land is actually the natural land of the restrictions of the property lines on the outside of it, it wasn't really conducive to remove one either. So it was a difficult situation, but I was actually, I wouldn't call it gun held in my head, but I certainly didn't want to get down to a minimum below minimum, where that would have been the reason why everybody wanted it to be. So I went just a half a unit above the minimum.
Right.
And it is true that I never calculated anything on the high bank bluff or any of the tideland in this calculation. This property stands on itself at the high bank, and of course, you can't, it would be a difficult situation, mostly, I would assume that that would be a property take if you took the backyards of the waterfront and took those out of the calculation, that would be a blatant property take, where it would be difficult, you know, to defend that, just based on the experience I've had in 14 states over the 40 years. But the answer to your question is, I was, it was, you know, we're talking fractions here, and I was already over the half, so I just didn't want to take the risk of being criticized for being below.
Sure.
Which would be the argument, I can guarantee you, if we were here right now, and why that would be a denial.
Okay.
And Mr. McPeters, I think that the reason why staff has amended the proposed findings of fact to include this new letter D is specifically to address the density issue in a different fashion. We obviously recognize that from the prior opening of the hearing, density and, as well as the public comments that we'd received during the public comment period, that the counting of the tidelands was an issue that the community was struggling with, and even some of the planning commissioners were struggling with, which is why we went to the effort of calculating the project, calculating the project's density... excluding that, and demonstrating that the density, if you exclude that area, is still inside of the density range.
Right.
That the R1 zoning allows.
Yes, but much closer to the top end of the range than the bottom end of the range.
But nevertheless, sir, within the range. And, and there's nothing in the code that tells us being closer to one, one part or the other is more desirable.
Sure, of, of course. But there, there does come down to the, and there's a, a section in the comprehensive plan that talks about, I believe, maintaining the character of the neighborhood. And these, you know, I'm not super familiar with the neighborhood. I'd never driven down Scenic Heights Road until last Thursday. But this is a group of parcels that have one house on them. Now, clearly, given what we've discussed here this evening, anybody who wants to build in that neighborhood is going to have to come up with a higher level of density. This is going to a, a much higher level of density, and to Mr. Cohen's comments, I think, on precedent. I'll be in the other room. So, we have these two parcels. We build them out five and a half units per acre, or per parcel, and then have a bunch more of these parcels come out over the next 20-odd years that have to be built at more or less the same density. I was very surprised at the, at the number of houses on this, in this project, partly because I wouldn't want to make a, a right turn off of what I can see of the property trying to get onto Scenic Heights Road. That's, that would be a difficult turn, even a right turn, to make from there. You're coming up a slope to a driveway. There's a curve around the corner that would be difficult to see about, uh, see around. So, when we get to the next project, and the next project, and the next, with increasing levels of traffic, unless there is some notion that we have that we're going to have better traffic flow through there, I think that we're kind of putting ourselves in, in a box. That's, I, I used to live in Linwood, and out the side of Linwood, in unincorporated Snohomish County. During, for 10, the 10 years that I lived there, there were a number of high-unit apartment communities that were built. The roads around them were never widened. They were already two or three lanes in each direction. The traffic there got to be horrendous. This road isn't going to support having this level of density in a number of other parcels. And I hadn't even taken into account the, the project across the street that's eight lots. Now, looking at the map, it looks like people would be able to either come down to Scenic Heights Road from those, or presumably there'll be through up to some other, I think up to Eagle Vista. But I think we're, we're opening ourselves up for some very serious traffic problems at this level of density. Now, I don't, I don't really know quite where I'm going here, because clearly we have some, some obligations put on us by the code, balanced, as Jill said, with what is the clearest overwhelming sentiment of the people who live in that community. And I don't know how to square that circle. But I think this is a very difficult problem.
And I think that the commission is experiencing the realities of new project approval in an existing neighborhood. And whether it's on Scenic Heights, or on Fort Nugent, or on Whidbey Avenue, the, the issues are remarkably similar when we're talking about the infill or the intensity, increasing the, the density within an area. And so there is this inherent tension, and, and there are oftentimes no easy way to answer those questions. Couple of thoughts, though, if I, if I could. A number of folks in the audience, as well as yourself, have expressed concern about the next project, and the next project, and the next project. And this may sound trite, and I don't intend it to be. Those projects have to start with willing sellers of property. So, the fact that we have an applicant on these two pieces of property does not automatically lead to the fact that in a very short period of time, we're going to have somebody else proposing the same thing. I can't tell you that it won't happen. You should be cautious of that. But this is the nature of how things gradually change, or don't change, is it's, it in many ways starts with a willing property owner. The issue of traffic, I think, is, is always of concern. And it's a concern whether it's 11 units, or it's 20 units, or sometimes even if it's five units. It, yes, it's a change in the circumstances, and staff is certainly not downplaying that. And I think we take very seriously the concerns that the neighborhood has about traffic safety. But we are obligated as a city to balance those against our ability to require private developers or private property owners to fix an area-wide problem that they didn't create. Now, we are, under the law, able to make them fix or correct any of the deficiencies that they might be adding to. In other words, if they are, if their project is the one that tips it over the edge in terms of a level of service, or some, some similar fashion such as that, then we have the ability to require them to fix that problem. And that's held up through the, through the court systems. Absent that, what we are, what we're able to do is to say that they have to take care of their share of the traffic. And so we look at what impact will that have? If it doesn't drop intersections below identified levels of service, then their obligation is to pay the transportation impact fee. Those funds are collected by the city, and we would then utilize those on transportation projects throughout the city. And so that's how, at a system level, we're able to address the traffic. Now, I recognize that is of no comfort to the neighbors this evening, who are concerned about traffic on Scenic Heights. And I wish I had a better answer that would, that would make them comfortable, but I, I don't. So, we've, we've got some inherent conflicts when we're talking about infill. We're always going to be dealing with traffic issues, and I want to come back to the last part, where I think that the planning commission has some, obviously some level of, of discretion here. It's not a, a huge amount. And it's something that I frequently tell you, that if you look at the same set of facts and come to a different analysis, a different conclusion than what the staff has, then that's what you put forward as your recommendation. Where I get nervous is if, is if I have a planning commission who ignores the facts and comes up with a different answer, that's where the arbitrary and capricious comes along.
Right.
Right? So, within the ability to look at the, I think, the difference between the variations requested and, and the, the extras, if you will, of the project, I think that's where you have your, your room. But we don't have room on the density, because we do have a minimum, and we do have a maximum.
Steve, if I might, could we take like a five-minute, just a very brief, fill our water glasses?
I think that's a great idea.
Bathroom break.
Yeah.
Not very long.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to keep 100 people waiting.
Tim will, Tim will set the meter for five minutes.
God.[1094.04]
Okay, folks, if we could reconvene here. So, call the meeting back to order. So, we left off, Alan, if you have other concerns you'd like to address?
No, I had my notes to ask the people in the community how many houses they thought was appropriate for that, and I think we kind of got that from the public comment. So, I think I'm, I think I've got it.
Yeah, okay.
Don't check, don't check.
Let's see. Oh, Hal, you want to?
Yeah, I've got one question raised. So, if somebody has, each of these lots is roughly an acre and a half, 1.6 acres.
Yes.
If somebody had an acre and a half of land in city limits, could they subdivide that into two parcels?
No.
So, you would require them to put a minimum of five?
If my math is correct in my head, yes, that would be about right.
So, if they wanted to do just two parcels, you would require them to go to a hearing examiner?
Okay, so, here's the thing. When we're referring to these lots specifically, these very narrow, long lots, and we told them, "You have to have at least five units because that's the minimum density." And they said, "Well, look, I can't meet the code because the minimum lot width is 60 feet. And I can only put two lots on there because that's, you know, that very narrow lot." I think that would be a hardship that we could go to the hearing examiner and get a variance on. That, that could be something you could investigate on a case-by-case basis. Depending on the one and a half acres, if it was a nice square plot and you could provide your 60 by 90-foot lots all the way around, then you would need to do that. So, it's, it's yes and no, it depends.
Yes, I always have something to say. It's been brought up a number of times tonight, more especially tonight than last month, takings. It's a big issue for me. It's also been commented, when I bought this property and developed it, it was county, now it's city. It's also amazing to me what the county requires and what the city requires. Right down the street on Sinek Heights Ridge, there's huge properties with one house on it. And at some point in time, those houses, those properties are going to be developed. Why? Because the county is forcing us to do that. If it's in the city limits, they're counting every square inch of property that's in this city as buildable land. There might be, it might be a five-acre parcel with one house on it that Grandma and Grandpa built, they've left it to their kids, their kids have left it. The new kids today don't want property like that to maintain. They can't afford the sanitation rates, they can't afford to pay the water bill, they can't afford to pay the landscaper to maintain it. They don't want that. Again, we're right back to the takings again. Now, we have a developer that owns two parcels of land. As I remember, this started out as be one parcel, way back, when it first started, now it's two. So, it is a little bit larger. But also, the mere fact that the minimum houses they could put on these two parts of land is 10. Okay? So, there's a concern there. Would the developer say 10? Well, 10 kind of sets it out of balance a little bit. I've always worried about this project. I've spent a lot of time out there, in the rain, in the sunshine, not much sunshine, but in the rain, walking it, watching it, looking at the stakes, the trees, the water. I also turn around and I look at the, right above the hill, there's nine more lots up there, and that number could even change. It's identified for sale for nine lots, okay? But that could change. And that's what Oak Harbor is about, is change. And we're going through it whether we like it or not. Every development that I've set before, and I didn't come from the state, I moved to the state on purpose. But I live at a PRD. I know what's going to happen on these lots. I know about the sewer system, or the drainage system on this property, and what constraints the buyers are going to have, because I face it every day. Okay? We have small lots, we have large lots, we have houses where they can't even put a portable basketball hoop down the side of their house because there's no room for it to fit. Hence, we have three-and-a-half-foot, you know, wide spaces on the sides of these houses. But the market is out there. If you take the same houses that they're showing us pictures of, and you go out towards Coopville, along the water, this is what they're building. This is what they want. And this is what it's selling. Now, let's take it a step farther, across the street from Sinek Heights, across from Safeway. We haven't seen that yet. That is so humongous, it's unbelievable. But yet, it meets code. Okay, so, you know, I've had my ups and downs on this project. I've, I've said no to myself, no to myself. But the law is the law. And if we deny this, this development, you know, we're basically telling the law that, you know, we're here to be sued, because we didn't set the law. State of Washington is pushing the law, they're pushing for smaller lots, they're pushing for larger densities, and they're doing it all around us. The county's doing it as well. Okay, you don't see as many five-acre parcels anymore. Okay? Now, you're finding half-acre parcels that are narrow for a mobile home. Okay? But there's no side yard. So, I don't see a difference with this gentleman's project. I think it's a good-looking project. It's a project I've thought deeply about. I've lost sleep over, and I've listened to every single one of you that's spoken tonight. But I, what I hear are the same reasons why not in my backyard, that we've heard in all these developments throughout the city since I've been on the commission. And if you go to any other channel, and if you listen to Seattle, and, you know, King County and St. Thomas County, you saw what they did. Okay, I don't know if I brought this up at the last month's meeting, but four back-to-back lots on two streets, four single-family houses. The county, King County, said, "Build 40 condominiums on there and no onsite parking." It's being forced down our throats. So, you know, I have to, you know, I'm, far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to move forward.
Any other comments?
Got one more question that I meant to ask earlier. So, we got this documentation from the engineers. And this is preliminary storm drainage report from LDC. So, I guess, Mr. Villock, this might be a question for you. In this document, there is seven sections and then some appendices at the back. There's a section, Appendix C has this mysterious table of analysis results that I don't have the background to understand. But what I see here, this is on page 11, is a series of duration flows. And the fifth column here is headed pass slash fail. And every single row here says fail. And I, I don't know what this means. It doesn't seem to have a reference anywhere in the main body of the report.
Right, this is Mark Villock, LDC. I can easily answer that question. This, that pass fail is for flow control of the project, but as was discussed earlier, we're exempt from flow control. And so, the, we use that, that model, who's generally used for flow control, just to calculate what the flow off the, the property would be, so it could adequately size the conveyance pipes and the storm filters and the, the other facilities. But since the site was flow control exempt, the pass fail didn't mean anything in this case.
Okay, so, this is sort of a standard form for the report. And if you didn't use the standard form, you might have omitted this altogether, given that all these fails are a little alarming, but they're meaningless in this context.
They're meaningless in this case, and the software's provided by Department of Ecology and is not super flexible in, in, you know, in customization. They want it very standardized, so that the reviewers at the city can just easily look at it, know that we're using it properly, and that it's, it's, you know, meeting the requirements set out by the state.
I have some experience with state-provided software in a different context.
Yeah, especially when there's not a lot of users, it's, doesn't get a lot of attention by developers, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That was all I had.
Any other, Hal?
I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this project. I, you know, I think that it's a very professional presentation and, you know, very well done. And I really appreciate individual property rights. You know, I'm a real estate agent, and having more housing, having all kinds of different housing is, is very, very important to me, and I support that. And I, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Freeman's saying about, you know, where he's coming from. I think we put a lot of emphasis on the minimum of 10 units for the development as the density. But, you know, that's just one of many criteria and codes that we have to consider. You know, if you look at what the overlying code is, the RCW 5817, one of the, the drivers is to prevent the overcrowding of land. You know, Oak Harbor Municipal Code 2110 is developments that are appropriate for the community. You know, it's R1, it's supposed to be low density. I don't see how we can say that a property that's, you know, six feet away from your neighbor's door and 10 feet from your back door to their back door is, can at all be interpreted as low density. I, I really feel like, you know, we're trying to fit 11 pounds of potatoes into a five-pound bag, and I'd be happy with five pounds or seven pounds of potatoes in that bag, but 11 pounds just seems like a stretch. You know, I, I feel like my responsibility in the planning commission is not just to say that the lots have to be a minimum of 10 units and we approve it. It's to interpret the entirety of the code. And, you know, are we preventing the overcrowding of land by approving 10 units or 11 units on this? I don't think we are. I think that we're violating the intent of 5817.010 if we approved 11 units on that. So, you know, I can't support it at this time with this kind of density.
Any other comments? This is called deliberation.
I'm good.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
I have a very peculiar request here. I've had more than one person come to the, to us here and want to have just an additional minute or so. I, I don't want to reinvent the wheel here, and I don't want to beat a dead horse. I just want, if anyone has the need to have, just ask a question or make a statement, not three minutes long, I've talked with my fellow commissioners, and we say that that's all right to do.
That's absolutely within the discretion of the planning commission and your role as the chair.
Okay, so, having said that, do I have any takers from the audience? Now, remember, you got to keep it short now.
This isn't going to go long. So, Scott Thompson?
Yes.
If you were to take this property and not include the shoreline from the High Tide, and you divided the square footage of the land that was right there, so there was no, there, there was nothing left, each one of those lots would be 8,200 square feet for 11 lots. That would just be a standard subdivision, minimum 7,200 feet. And I wouldn't have to go through all of the open area, I wouldn't have to go through all the other parts of, of that. It would just be a straight calculation. So, what you're doing by making the statement that, of whatever this is, I, I still don't understand the statement, but, and I understand the emotion, but I don't understand from a legal, I only look at it from a lawful standpoint, I have to look at that, that way. What you're denying is denying a subdivision of 8,200 square-foot lots. And that would mean that I wouldn't have to put all of that open space in the way that I'm doing it, because PRDs require all that. So, it's going to really, it's, it's just, it's just a, I, I understand this is difficult. I, I've done the best I can to communicate with staff. I mean, we've put excessive amount of time into this. What we're doing is we're just killing a piece of property's value for its highest and best use based on the GMA Act, and I, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Ken?
I'm still Ken Hewlett from Sinek Heights. Thank you for the additional time. If this property is being killed because of the hesitancy to make a decision, why'd you buy it in the first place? I mean, it has value, right? To someone. Maybe not this particular plan. Mr. Powers mentioned the traffic impact fees. Those impact fees are $907 a unit, you know, one-time fee. And that's not going to build a lot of roads. When we built our house, bought the property and built the house, the county required that we give them 20 feet of additional roadway, right-of-way on our property. Because, as it was explained to me by the traffic engineer with the county at that time, the road was already being stressed at that time, 25 years ago, and it had to be widened at some point in time, so they needed to start acquiring water, or a right-of-way. The other thing, you know, in terms of looking at the property, you know, the, the Shoreline Protection Act and the, a lot of resulting ordinances fall under the public trust doctrine that has a lot of ramifications in common law. And I'm getting off script here a little bit, but, you know, those, those are things that don't treat this like a normal piece of property. The other thing, the other feature is the critical areas of the bluff. And, you know, we talked about the runoff over and over and over again. This type of density, no matter how you try to control the surface water, there's a ton of groundwater coming out of the, you know, across the entire bank in Algaferro, you know, whatever it is, two miles or something.
Okay, Ken.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it's all going to be low-bank waterfront if you build stuff like this on it.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Do I have anyone else that, okay? State your name, please.
Kevin Carmen.
Kevin.
Wanted to state, along Sinek Heights there, through north to south, there, there was an easement given, there was 10 feet there, an additional 10 feet was given. So, there is 20 feet of easement that was given. Just mentioning for the prior gentleman about giving up the property there. Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you, Kevin. Yes?
My name is Sharon Lewis. I live at 1575 Paul Nail Road. For the last almost nine months, my husband and I have been looking for a home in Oak Harbor that is a small lot. We've got a beautiful home with a beautiful water view. We're now in our 70s and we need to downsize. There is nothing in Oak Harbor with a small lot in a nice neighborhood. I urge you to consider the people that live in Oak Harbor or the greater Oak Harbor area and what we are also looking for. Thank you.
Appreciate your comment, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Erin Hoskins, and we live up Baldur Road. It's about a five- or six-minute walk down to Sinek Heights. I also serve on a committee for the city, I'm on the LTAC committee. In fact, Mr. Hovey, I share your chair, you might find my pen in your drawer. But anyway, a lot of things that we go into, I've served on the committee for three years. We take in a lot of applications, we have to consider a lot of things, it's not easy. A lot of what we have to decide is who's going to benefit the most from this and how we, we grant the funding. One of the things I'm looking at on this, and I just got new glasses, but I still can't make out a lot of the, the numbers, but how wide is that area there that's considered the shared space?
Forty feet. Can't be very, can't be very.
It's about 60 feet.
60 feet.
So, 60 feet is a shared backyard for 11 homes? Good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews. Jim. Remember, short and sweet.
Jim Matthews, 3,200 Southwest Sinek Heights, next to the White House is where I live.
I knew that was coming.
And...
Okay, Jim.
Recently, I neglected to be a good neighbor. The Wassinger House, the White House, has an under, on the basement floor, there's a garage. You go down and incline into that. And there's a drainage trench across the front of that. There was a malfunction there. Do you know that my neighbor is going to have to replace his basement flooring because of a flood of water went down there? Now, water, 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 water. I guess, you know, common sense and gumption, who determines that? We're governed, our activities, and all we do is covered by legislation and regulation. You know, years ago, centuries ago, they were burning people back in Salem. But it was the law, it was all right, because it met this, the box, check the box. I think we need to just talk about people...
I can't be rude to you, Jim, because you're my senior, but...
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, okay, Jim.
Do consider the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, one more. I don't want to become unbiased here.
Lynn Bergen. I just live a little north of the planned proposal. Seems to me the decision to have this PRD was to be able to cram more houses in there. They could have decided to just replace one of the, either one of the two houses that are on there or put something smaller in there. And my experience with PRDs is that they are interconnected into a community. They, you can walk downtown, you can go to restaurants, you can, you know, be an integral part of a community, where this PRD doesn't provide any of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clay White. Just one general comment. You know, prior to joining the private sector, I worked for local government for 16 years, so I've been in lots of meetings like this. And one of the things that staff keyed on tonight that I just hope you keep in mind is, you have, you know, the Growth Management Act, and then you have your comprehensive plan, and then the city adopts development regulations. And the development regulations are what you utilize in order to make decisions on projects. In this case, the city decided to adopt subdivision regulations and PRD regulations and lots of tools that can be utilized. And so, we submit an application that meets all the requirements for a PRD. It's, it's that legislative process at the intent. And these processes can be very difficult on the implementation side when a project comes in, but really, you have to go back to the intent when the legislative body adopted the code. And there's a recommendation from staff that we meet all code requirements. We've turned in all the technical reports that the city requires, they've been reviewed and peer-reviewed. And so, I get it at the implementation level, but, but the code is what they've decided to adopt, and, and we're simply trying to implement those sections of the code. So, I hope that you would recommend approval based upon our compliance with Oak Harbor Municipal Code.
Thank you. I'm going to close this public hearing one more time. Not the public hearing, but the public testimony, excuse me. I misspoke. I did not close the hearing. I'm closed, though. Do we have an indeliberation as any other comments?
Let me just say one last thing.
Absolutely.
So...
It doesn't have to be your last thing.
Okay.
Not at this point.
The setbacks are a real issue for me. You know, we've got, I appreciate Mr. Thompson's comment about the 8,200 square-foot average, but we don't have that. We have 2,600 square-foot lots in some cases. We have three-foot side setbacks is what's being asked for. You know, when you have a house that's a minimum of 2,400 square feet on a 2,300 square-foot or 2,600 square-foot lot, there's only so much room. You know, if there were 1,200 square-foot houses on a 2,600-foot lot, you're going to have bigger side back, side setbacks. You know, there's, I appreciate the, the, the point that even if you have to stick with 10 houses per, for the development as a minimum, there's ways to get there that don't require setbacks of five foot for your backyard, three foot for your side yard, and 10 foot for your front yard. There's ways to get there. And that's not happening here.
May I point something out? The PRD code requires that there be open space set aside. And that, that central area that referred to as a backyard is about 7,000 square feet, which is a significant space. That eats up the setbacks. If we didn't require that, you could have much larger setbacks. We'd be looking at five to seven to 10-foot setbacks on the side, and then you wouldn't have that open space. You wouldn't have that increased level of design that we require through the PRD code.
Just as a devil's advocate, could that be a variance?
To the, the... The, okay, so, the permissive variations do not allow variation from the PRD code. That is a requirement of the PRD code, therefore, you cannot.
So much for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not entirely sure I understand that. The PRD code requires a certain percentage to be open space?
Yes, that's correct.
And...
There's a, sorry, go ahead. There's a percentage of open space, and there's also a percentage of that that has to be active open space. They've, they've set aside their open space, and they've also set aside this area as active open space. So, it's a lawn, you know, there's a bench on it, there's, there's things for people to do in this open space area, you can play croquet or whatever.
It wouldn't be a PRD if it did have open space.
Right.
Well, I, I've, I've... Picked up on that. But the, we're talking about the area behind Houses 9, 10, 11, that's that 75-foot setback. That can't be used for that, is that correct?
That is correct. That, this area is being utilized as open space. This area is being utilized as active open space.
So, there's a difference in the, there's...
I don't want you falling off the cliff.
Well... Mr. McPeters, there's a difference in the code between active open space and passive open space? And both are delineated or defined in the code?
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll have to think about that a little bit.
Okay. Any other comments? No, well, okay. Mr. Phillips, anything further?
Ready to move forward?
Okay. Hal?
No, I don't have anything else.
Seeing now that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now I'm going to ask for the question.
I'm ready to move forward. That's my ques, I mean, that's my statement. You know, I think we've...
So we have to entertain a motion?
I am willing to...
I know the law is the law. I know we're supposed to follow the law. That's what we're here for, we're to interpret it. But there's common sense also. And for me, common sense says, I disagree with this. I think my recommendation is that, Mr. Thompson, no offense, I recommend, I would recommend that you review your plan, look at a smaller number of lot, of units, if possible. There are revisions that you can do. Instead of 14 PRBs or 14 changes, is there a revision that you can do in order to change that? Just one revision. There's a way that everybody can win on this and not one person win everything and make everybody else upset. That's my view.
I'm going to entertain a motion, recommend approval to the city council of the above-listed preliminary Platts. Preliminary PRD and associated permits subject to conditions of approval. The condition of approval I would like to add to the list is to save the two trees that have been identified by the Coens.
I have a motion.
Zach, you want a second?
Do I have a second?
I got a second?
Nobody asked you. Somebody's got to. Don't ask, nobody asked to do anything.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for the question. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's not possible for you to abstain.
Okay, then I'm a, I'm a yea.
Okay.
Good try, right? Good try. See, you didn't tell me. They didn't coach me up on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I believe that that takes care of this agenda item, for sure.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to take another brief recess and carry on. I know it's 9:20.
Yeah, we have other items, but at the discretion of the Planning Commission, we could decide to postpone those items.
We should press on.
We should press on.
Let's press on with at least one.
I want to explain why I did yea. I believe, like you guys did, but you know...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Before the audience leaves, folks, so it was brought to my attention that what you had was a motion that failed. And so you don't have, you haven't actually taken an action in, because you have a motion which failed?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay? And then additionally, additionally, if the Planning Commission's recommendation to the city council is for denial, then we need to have, your findings of fact need to be adjusted because the findings of fact are written in a...
Okay, Steve. I have the guy. Yeah, oh, yeah.
The findings of fact are written in a fashion to support the staff's analysis and the staff's recommendation to you as the Planning Commission. And so if you're going to, first of all, there needs to be a motion that actually passes. And then, secondly, should you recommend to the council denial of the project, which as your, as your Development Services Director, I would not recommend that you do, then you need to provide direction to staff as to how to revise the findings of fact to support your recommendation to the city council.
So what you're, what you're saying, Steve, if I'm following right, if we're going to deny it, or if we're going to basically deny it like we did, where it got voted down, we got to give a recommendation on how to fix it?
No, sir. What I'm saying is, is that what you had was a motion for approval that failed, which is different than a recommendation to the city council that the project be denied. And so if that is, if that is the wish of the Planning Commission, then there needs to be a recommendation to that effect and a second and a vote then to support that. Additionally, it would be your responsibility to help us understand how to revise the findings of fact to support that recommendation to the city council. And I feel obligated to inform the Planning Commission that the sense that the project is over-density for the area would not be a sound basis for a finding. I recognize your frustration, for those of you who voted against the approval, and I certainly recognize the public's frustration. But we are in the midst of a quasi-judicial proceeding in which we have an obligation to make recommendations that are within the confines of the law.
Right. So we can...
So what has to happen is, we have to come up with findings of fact to support a motion which would have to pass to recommend that this was not approved by the city council.
We're off.
We're still, we're still full deal. I mean, you know, I, what happened here was rather abrupt, and the audience is, the audience left, but we still have an ongoing issue that we have to resolve here.
What he's saying is if we, as a body, reject this, we've got to come up with findings of fact. Well, first of all, staff recommends that we don't turn this down. That's number one.
What if we continue the hearing?
We can do that too, but I don't... So how's continuing it's going to help?
Because otherwise, we got to write findings of fact while we're sitting up here and, you know, without any legal expertise to consult them. I think it would be beneficial for the audience as well as for those who might view the tape, if I can have the Planning Commissioner speak into your microphones, please, because this is an important conversation that you're having.
My, the reason why I made the recommendation is the planning staff, the documents, the legal doc has been prepared, said they can't build anything less than 10. They've told us that numerous times. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's why I made the recommendation. Everything else is frivolous. I mean, it really is.
So there's no...
No matter what my opinions are, okay, I'm following the law and the findings of fact, we have to have a reason why it's not supported. If you're going to deny it, you have to have the reasons, okay? Otherwise, it meets the code. That's, that's the whole issue. Personality or personal views on it are out the door because the law is written the way it is. If I had my way, nothing would be built with a variance. But I don't have my way. The law's been set, okay? And that's what we have in front of us.
So, could he have done a revision? Could there have been a revision in order to have less than 10, 10 units put on that property?
No.
No.
Nothing at all could have been done for less?
The minimum zone, the minimum density for that zone being three units per acre means that you have to do at least 10 houses.
Now, if he didn't do a PRD?
Same thing. It's, that's the underlying zoning. The underlying zoning of R1 says three to six units per acre. The PRD allows them to make adjustments to the layout of the prop, the project, which you're all looking at with the smaller setbacks and lot sizes and all that stuff. But the fact is that underneath that is always going to be three to six units per acre.
Right. So he has 1.6 acres, and if he went with the minimum amount, which would have been three?
No. He has 3.27 acres.
He's got 3.27 acres because the law requires us to take into consideration the entire size of the parcel, even the part that goes out into the tidings.
Right, I understand that, but common sense dictates that you can't...
Common sense isn't what it's at issue here. This is what the law is.
Sometimes you've got to look at it from a different perspective. And this is, I'm...
Well, and so that's a possibility, but if we want to do that, then we have to edit this document for the findings of fact that say that we have a reason for doing that. And it's got to be a pretty good reason, or it's going to be judged as arbitrary and capricious, and we're going to open up the city to legal action, which we really don't want to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I appreciate Mr. Phillips' call to use common sense. I absolutely do. And I've been struggling hard to figure out a way to say, to not say this, but I have to say it. In some cases, common sense has nothing to do with development regulations. And I don't say that lightly, and I don't say it flippantly.
Right.
We are obligated collectively to follow a great number of regulations when it comes to land development, more than you can shake a stick at. But Mr. White had a, had a great comment towards the end of the public hearing portion, which was he connected the dots for the Planning Commission from GMA to comprehensive plan to development regulations. The time to be thinking about what we want to see happen is not when somebody makes application under the development regulations that the city has adopted. The time for that conversation is about, is, is at a different time. That's when we say, is our code yielding for us the types of projects that our community is desirous of? Is it meeting all of the goals? Is it meeting GMA, et cetera, et cetera? That's when we have the conversation about what the development regulations say. At this point in the process, we are frankly precluded from having that kind of conversation. So while, again, I'm going to come back full circle, I appreciate your desire to interject common sense. I appreciate all of your desires to listen to and take seriously the input from the, from the citizens who have come to two hearings. When we get to this stage, our roles are, is the project meeting the requirements of the code?
But, Steve, I, I, I am listening. I am, trust me. I went to the property. I saw with my own eyes what these concerns are. These people, they live there, they know, they know this land better than the experts. I'm sorry, the experts are good, yes. And in some terms, you know, pardon my, pardon my language, I don't mean insult, but sometimes the experts are idiots. You know, if someone lives on the land, if a farmer farms a land his entire life, he knows that land better than the chemist or the geologist that comes in and says, hey, you got, you can do this, or, hey, this won't grow here, when the farmer's been growing that his, you know, his entire life, he's been growing that crop there on that land. Sometimes these people know their land better than what the geologists or the terrain techs know.
I don't doubt that at all in certain instances. In fact, I think there's a great example in this very application. With the original materials that were filed with the application, there was no mention made of groundwater seepage. Citizens who lived in that area said, wait a minute, we know that there's groundwater that comes through here. We see it come through the side of the bluff. They brought that to our attention. Staff raised it with, with the applicant's consulting engineers. They went back out and reexamined the property. So that part, absolutely, I agree with that. The challenge is, if you are an applicant, and not necessarily this one, but anybody who's wanting to build any project within, within the city of Oak Harbor, we have to provide to, provide them standards which are objective, that, that they can measure their ability to meet or not meet. The applicant has met the burden of providing all of the information which is necessary from the city code perspective. The city's consulting engineer has reviewed that information, because I know the issue is primarily is, is the slope issues. Not only did we have our consulting engineer do it, we hired a third-party reviewer to make sure that we knew what we were talking about. And so again, I, I know I sound like a broken record. I strongly appreciate the neighbors' concerns, and I recognize that this is a change in the community, should it be approved. But I also have this really strong obligation to remind the Planning Commission that we have to operate inside of the confines of our process. And, and should you wish to make a recommendation to the council to not approve the project, that has to be supported by findings of fact. I appreciate Mr. Hovey's concern that you would have a difficult time writing them here this evening, especially since the hour is late. And, and I don't want to, let's, we'll, we'll deal with that issue if we have to. But that's my obligation, is to tell you what your role is here.
And if I might, you know, for the, PRD have special allowances. They have negotiated and they've talked about all the different constraints on the property and the different issues. Okay, I see 32, we've now got 33 requirements. Okay, conditions of approval. If the developer had said no, then we have a reason and a basis of fact, okay, to deny. But he didn't say no, he said yes. 32 conditions that were, that were, that were put before him. So he's within law. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's how I read it.
So my understanding is that these are all dependent on the permissive variations that you guys have talked about over the last 11 months while you've been working on this? And that we can make changes, we can recommend changes to these permissive variations. So in correspondence between the two, the three of us, I asked what the minimum setbacks were for another PRD, which Mr. Freeman's very familiar with, and that's the Fairway Point PRD on Southwest Aberdeen Court. And those had minimum of five-foot setbacks on the sides, 10-foot in the back and 20-foot in the front. You know, if we have to support a minimum of 10 houses per, for this development, then, you know, I'm not going to support it unless we have minimum of 10-foot setbacks, you know, for the backyard, five-foot on the side yards, and 20-foot for the front yard. So if I got to pass it, then I want changes in the permissive variations.
And, and certainly the Planning Commission is free to deliberate, to deliberate that, that point. I think if I could offer a point of view on the setbacks, if you'll notice, the perimeter of the project is not at a, at a reduced setback area.
Right.
And that's specifically included in the PRD code, that you have to have the 20-foot perimeter setback. The rationale behind that is so that that is the standard rear yard setback, or very close to the standard rear yard setback from a non-PRD project. And what it says is that for the adjacent properties on either side, we're going to have the larger setback around that property. Internal to the project, those setbacks are the ones that, that are allowed to be buried. The idea is, is that you provide that separation between the existing development pattern, which may or may not be a PRD, but that interior of the project, those setbacks are, I don't, the only word I can think of is discretion. That's what the, what the applicant proposes because that's the product and the community that he or she envisions building. So while I don't discount your particular viewpoint that these yards should have larger setbacks, in some ways, that decision is, is left to the applicant. And what we're doing is, as with our code as a city, is we're protecting the adjacent properties by making sure that they have the larger setback. properties by making sure that they have the larger setback.
So for those... Since my name was mentioned already regarding a PRD, the twenty-two, five thousand square foot lots that we have, in some cases, they don't all have ten-foot backyards. Many of them only have five-foot backyards, and it's from the back of the structure to the fence. I would say probably ninety-five percent of the neighbors that live on Aberdeen Court are all previous residents of this island, and most of them had ten-acre lots, okay, up in Penn Cove area and, and all of that. And they didn't, they got tired of taking care of it. They want someone else to take care of it, and that's why they moved to our PRD, because they didn't want the property maintenance. And I think one of the individuals that was here tonight speaking says just that, we want to get rid of a big lot. We don't want a big lot, but we want to stay here. And there's no place unless you want to move into a condominium, and you've got one above and one below, and then you, and then on all sides of you. They don't really want that. They want something like this. That's the way I saw it.
So for those of you in the audience, this is another example, the Lehigh Project comes to mind, of how important it is to get involved in these at the earliest possible opportunity. And the earliest possible opportunity, I think we've demonstrated pretty well this evening, is before the project is proposed. Those of you who live on the bluff, best I can recommend is that you work together with the city council and maybe us, if we're part of that process, at changing the land use regulations in Oak Harbor. Possibly create another level of zoning that includes, that makes possible a lower level of density in that particular neighborhood because of the, the conservancy, so that this kind of project doesn't come up again. However, much to my chagrin, I move that we accept, that we forward a recommendation to the city council.
Hang on, we've got to back up here. We've got to start over if you would. We didn't have a second, so I can withdraw my motion. Did you make a motion? I made a motion to approve. We already have...
There was, there was a second.
Because it got us a second.
So the motion failed. Mr. Freeman's motion fit, I think Mr. Freeman made it and Mr. Philip seconded it.
That's correct.
And that motion failed.
Okay, all right, then we can...
So I am moving again that we forward a recommendation to the city council for the approval of the above-listed preliminary plat, the preliminary PRD, and the associated permits, subject to the conditions of approval, with the addition of the condition of approval that the two trees previously referred be maintained on the property throughout their natural lifespan.
I will second that motion.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, could I take it from your motion, Mr. McFeeters, that you are including the revised conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Have a motion?
The ones that you have.
And I have a second. I call for the question. All in favor, same by, by same eye?
Eye.
Eye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Further, Mr. Chairman, I reckon, I move that we adopt the findings of fact, attachment seen in our packet as presented, with the inclusion of that altered condition of approval.
Yes, the revised findings of fact plus the additional condition of approval.
That's correct.
And I second the motion.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, being that it's nine forty-one, I move to adjourn.
We will, we will continue the items over to the next, I think we should press on, to the next agenda.
I think so. Do you want to press on?
Well, it's a, it's a motion adjourned, you could certainly vote it down, or it could fail for the want of a second.
I never got a second.
Well, then it fails for the want of a second.
Yeah, if it doesn't get a second, we keep going.
So are we off the books?
No.
No, we're still active.
We're still active. We haven't adjourned. I think we should do, don't you think we should do one more and do something else? I think so. I don't either.
I spent all my time this afternoon reading about this. I have other, other materials.
They're only, they're only my neighbors. I only have people attesting that live on both sides. We want to get on with it. We're three hours into this meeting, plus right now. No, nobody's going to stay, no.
Yeah.
We're, we're back.
Thanks.
Back to ourselves.
I was hoping you'd leave.
Oh, I'm so happy.
Oh, you're not here for that, you're here for this.
Oh, yeah, I saw a very long time ago.
I'm so sorry.
Wow.
Thanks for what you guys do, I know it's not easy. I won't pretend to have any idea what you feel or know, but they do.
Next item on the agenda this evening, if I could find such an item. That would be the design guidelines in this. Is there going to be a public hearing?
This is.
The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, continued from September twenty-four, on the final draft of the revised design regulations and guidelines, acronym DRG, document reflecting changes proposed by the Oak Harbor Main Street Association and discussed at previous Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission may make a recommendation to city council at the conclusion of the hearing. Having said that, Mr. Lindberg, it's Ray, you're on.
Thank you.
Staff will be brief for the benefit of the Planning Commission.
I have about a half-hour presentation to make.
Superb, it fits right in with this evening.
Exactly. I, I will be brief. We have discussed this in the past. This goes back to the spring. In our previous meeting in September, we discussed it a little bit. The Main Street Association asked for a little bit extra time to review the proposed document, and we have given them that time, and I would just actually like to open it up to Haley, the Main Street Director, see if she has any comments, and then we can move on from there.
Okay, sounds good. Haley?
I'm Haley Sanford, and again, thank you very much for doing this tonight. I'm really excited. So I've gone over the design review guidelines with Ray, compared them to the comp plan, and shown them to various property owners in the district, as well as people who have a lot more background knowledge on this type of thing, other than me. And there's, there's a lot of things that people want to see. This is a great step for us to move in that direction. But as we kind of work and flush out what all the property owners see as being the best possible future for downtown, whether that's aesthetically or otherwise, we see this as being a living document, and that's something that Ray and I have talked about. And so this is a great first step, and we're excited to continue to figure out what everybody in the district hopes to see, design-wise, and incorporate that later on as we flush out what that is exactly.
Thank you, Haley.
I have nothing further. We provided to you a copy of the proposed changes in your packet there, and my only comment on this is that there will be further review of the uses within the Central Business District as relating to what the Main Street Association proposal originally had from their original proposal, and going into, folding that into the current moratorium issue that's happening right now. So there's going to be a wide-ranging CBD review that's going to be taking place over the next couple of months, and that will probably, you know, involve a lot of the, the issues that they are concerned about, and they will certainly be, the Main Street Association will certainly be involved in that. We're going to have some public meetings and open houses and things like that going on. So just as a way of note, there will be further work happening on the use side. We're working on the design side right now with this.
Is that part of the moratorium process?
Correct.
Does, does that mean that, there's a recommendation in the staff memo on this, that we conduct this hearing and then forward a positive recommendation for approval of the document? Does that change that recommendation? Should we wait on this?
It does not. We are still focused just on the DRG document right now. Like I said, the, the main, the thing is, going, you know, going back through that presentation that we talked about in the past, the Main Street Association proposal included design issues, it included use issues, it included a public doc, it included a lot of things. It was wide-ranging, very detailed. What we wanted to do was focus things on the design issues, so we could fold that into our design regulations and, and guidelines document, which is what we're doing right now, and then take some of those use issues and more aspirational kind of things and fold that into the zoning code and figuring out what needs to happen with that. The moratorium came into effect, so we're going to work that all together and, and work it as, as the same project, a CBD code review, whereas what we're doing right now is just the DRG.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? There's a lot of work in this document. It shows.
I, can I make a motion? I move that we forward the design regulations and guidelines document forward to the city council with a positive recommendation for approval.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, comprehensive plan, next.
We're making it badly.
Item number three is, or C, is the 2019 comprehensive plan amendments. This is a public meeting. Staff will introduce the 2019 amendments that are progressing for year-end action. The capital improvement plan and the parks, recreation, and open space element are part of this year's update. Amendments are still being discussed for the economic development, housing element, and GPA slash UGA boundaries. Well, CAC, come back.
CAC, senior planner. I've got a lot of spreadsheets we can dive into.
Perfect.
But I think I've given you the copies. What we wanted to do was to, we discussed some of the comp plan amendments at the joint meeting with the city council. What we've done is just reflected those changes in the economic development element. The parks, recreation, and open space element is an already adopted document, so there's not much change there. That's just text from the plan that's getting into the elements, so that's not much of an issue. The spreadsheets in the CIP, in the capital improvements plan, has minor changes. I can go through the presentation, but I'm going to just save the time and just leave it for questions. We've added a couple of projects in the capital improvements plan, the changes, we've taken out the projects that we've completed. There's a column that's added in the tables to kind of show the continuing work that's being done on the project. So if anything is not clear to the commission, we're just kind of giving you the document just to get a feel for whether you see what the changes are going forward, whether it's comprehensible and understandable. And so all we're looking for is feedback and comments at this, at this point, so I'll open it up to the commission for thoughts and comments, if you have any.
On page three eighty-one of six forty-three, this is a minor one, but you did a lot of red line elements on the school district thing, but you're still reflecting that there's two grade six through eight middle schools, when it's really not that. There's middle school and intermediate school and, anyway, so that just needs some minor correction.
That's the, in the capital improvements plan.
That is on page three eighty-one of six forty-three. I don't know what that's under. Non-city-provided capital facilities.
Page fourteen of the, of the new document.
It's just a minor thing, it's, it's not a big deal. But under the transportation improvements, the capital improvements plan, under the transportation improvements, that SR twenty and Facum Road property access, you know, I've talked about this for several years, and last year it got moved out of the transportation plan into economic development, and now it's back out of economic development and back into transportation. That thing just won't die. Last year, you said it was going to be funded by grant, but I'm not seeing how it's going to be funded now. You've only got one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred in grants on here, and I don't think they're going to that.
The grant application was not successful with Island County, but the city of Oak Harbor had identified funding to undertake the project.
So we can't pave residential roads, but we're going to put in a brand-new road using the REIT funds?
There are competing priorities. I mean, and that, and that's the realities of a limited budget and more projects than what we can handle. And so there are reasons to support this project. The council has approved in the past, and it's a budgeted project for Public Works that, that I believe that they were still trying to get off the ground yet this year.
I don't support it, but anyway, I only get one vote. That's all I've got, thanks. Any other questions, comments?
And CAC, we're scheduled for a public hearing next month on this?
Yes, so this is not the last time you'll take a look at it. We'll come forward, the, this is the 2019 amendment, so the schedule is to have a hearing in November, and then have it in front of the city council before the end of the year so that they can take action. So, so you'll see it again next month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? I don't have anything to say. Okay, seeing as how it's going to come up again, I guess we can move on to the last item on the agenda this evening.
Thank you.
Central Business District code revision or review, public meeting. Staff presentation of potential Oak Harbor municipal code changes to the CBD zone districts addressing uses, lot density and configuration and related topics.
So I can safely say to the Planning Commission that that project has had to take a backseat to some other more pressing work. Ray is our project manager on that. I sent him home. I just said, you've done enough. And we intend to be back to the commission, not in November, to talk about that, because we're getting ourselves, well, potentially in November, but certainly by December, we'll be talking to you about it, about the topics that Ray was just mentioning. And no formal motion is necessary because it's just a meeting and, and we can schedule that ourselves.
Okay, I seem to have lost the talks and everything.
Well, the next meeting?
Next meeting is, if you're looking for the date of the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, is November twenty-sixth. And while I have the microphone, I just want to thank the Planning Commission for your, for your work for this evening, as well as preparing for this evening. I know that it was challenging, and the staff appreciates your commitment and your dedication to your task. Thank you.
The next Planning Commission meeting will be November twenty-sixth. Having no further business, meeting is adjourned.